I don't remember joining, I just, I just go there.
That's got the changes on that we've had. Okay, everybody ready? We get started then. Say the pledge.
The pledge of the Institute of the Way of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Revolution's fans. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Great, so glad everybody here tonight, definitely got the form thing going. Um, the regular agenda, we got one addition, we're gonna put that on 11B. Is that 18? Yeah, 18B, I'm sorry. And we'll put that, um, it's a special event. The, on December 11th, and it's called Tundra Mania. Discuss that when we get to 11, 18B, I don't like saying 11, 18B. Okay, that's the only one I know about, anybody got anything else? Look for motion to accept the regular agenda then with that addition. Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second. Right, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries, consent agenda, Jimmy, you last one, changes on that, okay? You made any questions on that?
I'm suing for the testing. For research and testing. That has to be tested. It's weekly because it's a direct discharge into the river. So that has certainly quite a specific that has a weekly testing. The goal is to sample was taken in the article for testing.
What happened with that sample? Okay, I guess, like what's the?
So when that station was originally started, there was no. Bugs rolling on the media.
The three containers that filtered.
And it stopped. It depends on the community. Basically, the state sent out says it's the audit compliance with improvement. You didn't order it from the back in order. There was a few of that just because the plan. Didn't have any other ones growing or any, and on the media, so the state pretty came to that, so. Since that, I think the plan didn't look pretty well. Any issues with being out of compliance, but.
It was because of the startup time too, where we start up late in the year, so it's too cold. Yeah, it was too cold.
Yep.
Yeah. And it's typically, it's a relatively simple process to look through. Reconexes that have filter media on it, those who's sold action, those who are going to be for disinfection. Typically, I shouldn't say typically, but if it were a larger system, service a larger area, it usually have a. Or something that could be just charged to when there was an issue. Then once the problem gets rectified, they can go back out of the river, but this one went having like. Do whatever it was in the secondary contract discharge, which obviously put up. River, so.
I had one question too, just, I mean, I just opened my packet, um, again. For B. Um, I didn't get a chance to review that. Um, what is that?
Pledge reports are, we just had as a standing item, we do have them, and it's basically, it's like you have your insured. Funds when you go, when you, you're, when you have funds in the bank. Pledge reports are basically security or insuring cities' funds. Uh, we might need to bring pledge reports to the council, I believe, twice a year, but we just keep it on the. Album, we just get home soon.
Okay.
All that $10 in the pledge department.
Okay, I just, I didn't get a chance to review it, it was just, it was just put in the packet today.
Okay, anything else, questions? Okay, I'm on the first motion to accept the consent agenda as is. Sarah makes a motion, maybe we does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all right, minutes, I didn't see anything.
No, good.
Okay, anyone makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all right, public comment, you may, you got anything you want to chat about tonight? Going once, going twice. Okay, move on, shares update, I think that's next go around. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, getting, I didn't get any mail, so, okay. Number eight, who wants that one first, Lucas, friends?
I can take it if you want, so one, so this is the, uh, got several items for Cub Creek second edition. Uh, which is water sewer storming street improvement district. To death. 11, um, as you recall, we had to do a resolution of necessity for this project, which I published in the newspaper. Which allows people within the district, uh, 30 day period to file written protests to the project with the city ordering. Uh, and then the city council holds a hearing based on what written protests were received. If written protests are received in, in much of the majority of the property area included in the district, the projects, uh. Would then be prohibited from proceeding, in this instance, Brett received 8%. But 8% of the property area within, uh, that district actually filed written protest in a timely manner. Uh, so we can discuss those protests tonight. Through a hearing for that, and we'll have some other action, I've got that Mr. Mayor just wants. Eight, eight to start with, that's our protest hearings.
Sure, we'll, we can open the floor for protest hearing.
Really quick, I know, you see a copy, there was one protest, or protest. It is after the deadline, but I want to make sure you're aware of receiving it. Three day after deadline. Also. We did have a meeting on this, or if anybody wanted to come touch me and talk with. June South and myself, we're here at the fire hall, uh, November 10th, um, 6pm. Available, I have two people attend.
Did, did the residents know that we were having a protest hearing tonight at this meeting? Did they get letters?
Within the letter, and it's publication.
All right, but the agenda, the agenda for today just went out this morning, so, I mean, it wasn't on our Facebook page or our website.
Right, so the people who are going to participate would have been aware of this.
And, but, to your point, uh, also reminds from protest had to be filed within the 30 day protest period, which expired November 14th, I believe.
Okay.
Uh, so the agenda notice is irrelevant to their ability to file written protest for tonight's hearing.
A lot of the letters stated that they would be. They're not aware that they would even have. Is. Um, being in this district, and I believe I asked in a previous meeting, are they aware of this? Aware of this situation? I was told yes. Um, I also find it really weird that we have, is it, is it normal for? This probably isn't something you guys know, but why are the majority of the people saying that their Realtors are telling them that? This is not thing, like they won't be, these are your assessments, they're not going to be put in this district. Why are they saying that, and why are every single one of these people trying to say that they were told that they weren't going to be in this assessment district? Is there something that we need to do to talk to these Realtor companies, or? I mean, I don't really appreciate.
From, from my experience here, that is not the first time I've heard someone say that the Realtors told that there's not gonna be.
Has something in there.
We don't know what realtors are telling people to sell on.
It's ridiculous.
I, I.
On the city for what?
Well, I know, I understand that, but it's frustrating. When I was told at one of the previous meetings, when I specifically said, does everyone know that they're going to be put in this district? And I was thought of, yes. And every single one of them stated that they weren't even aware of that. I, I, it's confusing to me. I don't get it.
Well, and this district was created, I don't know when, so a lot of.
Three, four years ago, or something.
Well, it's such a.
Earlier. And so people buy homes too, there's, there's a chance that when letters get sent out, it's not going to whoever. Own a lot at the time, but it was sent out.
There was one in here that I've just taken, just close, I think, three, within the last three weeks, that I didn't even have, or listed in these, in the. Property listing. At the beginning of the city.
Is there a way, like, is there something that we can do, and I don't know, and that's why I'm asking, for when these new homeowners buy a home? That there's something that goes with their paperwork stating, this is not just all you have for specials, there could be more. Is there something that we can do to alleviate the miscommunication or misrepresentation with their Realtor? Is that gonna make?
I just, I don't know if it's common sense, but I feel like you, in North Dakota, you have to expect that there's going to be continued improvements done in the city, and that you're subject to. Special assessments when most improvements are done. The city's not just gonna stay in a constant state, all these projects are needed as roads deteriorate, as sewer lines deteriorate, as.
I know, but this is a little different.
It's different.
It's a brand new development.
But what I'm just saying to your point of informing people that they could be subject to other.
I'm talking like new development, I'm talking about, hey, you're getting, you are.
Part of regional round.
Yes, you are building in a. Possible district that could potentially be assessed to you. Like, isn't there anything that we can do to try to like minimize?
But we would be speculated because we don't know what it's gonna be. Since we can tell everybody they're gonna be in one, I mean, it's same thing like in Lost River, we were. I mean, the assumption would be like, right, as we moved out to Lost River, there was gonna be specials, I mean, you got a couple road.
But this is also. Most of the time, developments pay for their own, and this is different, and so it, there's a little. In my mind, it, it's a little frustrating because it is different in my mind.
And, and, and this actually was planned with the conception of the entire development, so I think that this is a very different situation. Now, the, the protests that said that they just purchased their home like three weeks ago and didn't, didn't know. There are, Lucas, what are the disclosures that a property owner has to give when in a purchase agreement with a property?
I don't represent any of those.
I'm pretty sure you have to disclose if your property is within an assessment district.
Make sure that the city, the compliance statute and ordinances.
Okay.
And, you know, that's, I don't know what Realtors, I don't like.
I'd like to maybe look in the back.
I don't know what's in the purchase agreement.
I know when I sold a house, I had to disclose if I was in a special assessment district. And, um, this is, I'll be honest with you, I was surprised when I read these protest letters. Because I think they have valid concerns and I share them, I also recall being told that these people knew that they were going to be included in a second special assessment district. Um, and it's not like it was newly created, this was, this was probably conceptualized when Cub Creek first was, was designed. So that's where my heartburn is on this one. Um, this is different than a road, a road being developed after a, or whatever road you want to call, this is additional. Infrastructure within a new development, um, and I'm disappointed in this.
Don, you agree on, you had a question?
Yeah, I did feel a couple calls from some of our customers that we filled forward, or else, they, they were thinking that somehow they are helping subsidize Cub Creek second. In terms of the local improvements, and once I explained to them that that assessment portion that they were notified about. Is for the continuation, because I said, you know, that cornfield out there has specials on it right now for Cub Creek first, that is getting no benefit from Cub Creek first.
Did that, did that help alleviate any of their confusion?
Once I explained it to them that they are not paying for any of the local, being the curb, the gutter, the paving, the water, the sewer, but it's a continuation of the ponds. And the bridge, and 83rd, and all the rest of it, that the portion that they're getting is. Not small in terms of dollar amount, don't get me wrong, but in terms of the overall project or the percentage, it's part of the global overall. So there's some, and when I explained to them that they didn't get the full assessment for Cub Creek first. Because there's a lot of corn out there that is paying for ponds and roads and everything else. That helped also them to better understand that part of that is over there that's going to help relate you, and the continuation is, it's a part of the whole entire. Network that one can't be without the other, and the first can't go in, but the second can go without the first.
Were any of these, you probably haven't seen any of these letters that were any of those people, the ones that sent letters in to us?
I had a conversation with Mr. Ward personally just before this meeting.
So, but was any of this information communicated to these people when they purchased their lots in Cub Creek? I'm, I mean, you maybe don't know that, but I'd like to see if there's something we can do to make sure these people, when they buy their lots, understand. There might be a step two to their infrastructure within their development.
Yeah, it's a pretty robust description clause in the purchase agreement that people have to initial and sign up on, that this is where the specials are today, and future specials are. Unknown and pending, or whatever else, and then like to your point, you have to disclose if you would have received that little. Letter or postcard saying that you're gonna be in an improvement district, so you have to let the next person know, but some of these people have been there for two, three years, two years now going on, so. You know, depending on where that was out of the cycle, I think it's, it's, um. It's very confusing as to how the math works. Had they been assessed for the full $60,000 that would have been on all of it, if we would have only put all that money of half of 63rd Street, and all of the. Pond digging into Cub Creek first, the specials would have been significantly higher, and then if the people have been coming in Cub Creek second, wouldn't be helping pay for it, then I think that'd be vastly unfair. So what we do is we constantly are allocating it all over a much broader area, almost mile to mile, mile to mile, right? So that the people that are in first are not paying anything more than the person that's coming in last. And the person that maybe coming in last may be paying actually less because the developer or landlord or head of the, they're paying part of that. Very for those time during distributor's point to say, you know, Cub Creek could have been in two years ago, or it could be, I've been pushed off for two more years, we just, we just don't know when, when that comes into play, so.
And I, I just had another question when I was looking at the, the ID agreement, so it looked like when the, uh, assessment district was initially created in March, correct? Um. It wasn't clear what the language. Where it says, um, we're requesting that the council determine a resolution that a written petition for the improvements. Signed by a majority of the owners in the area of the property, has been received in that the resolution declaring work necessary. Shall not be required for the improvement district, that was back in March, so what is, how does that work?
So that's why we're having this hearing today, because originally we had that petition, then subsequently found out that it did not cover the majority of the area. So in lieu of the petition for improvements, we're doing this hearing tonight.
So do we, I know we did this in Cub Creek last meeting, right? I think we discussed this, and we discussed that Deer Creek, the section we talked about Deer Creek is just all new landowner developed. So, so if this would have gone forward, I mean, did the people in the assessment district get notification back in March when this resolution went through? That they had an ability to protest the assessment district?
So under North Dakota law, you either have to do the resolution of necessity. Or if a petition for improvements is filed for a majority of the area of the district, you're not required to go through that process.
So that, so then that wasn't done at that time?
Because it was not necessary.
So.
But this, the district at that point is already created.
Yep, and, and I get that, it's just, it's disappointing to me because in this situation, there are a lot of homes that are already within this district that, there's a lot of. Homeowners and residents in the district, and they lost out on their ability back in March.
Same, same opportunity today as they were.
I know, but this was back in March, I get, my concern again goes back to the notice. Um, to the residents, um, of Cub Creek first.
Okay, any other concerns, guys, questions?
I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, like, the power of those individual residents was taken away when you make one large assessment district. Um, they got some notices taken away from them in March, correct?
So if your concern is not with all the notices done with the side of the district?
Well, partially the same, I mean, they would have maybe had more advanced notice, but the larger property owners in this district overrode the need to go through our normal special assessment policy.
This process of great night. It's an opportunity.
Yeah.
Than if there was a petition for improvements that covered majority of it.
So we must have changed courses from March, when you decided there wasn't a majority owner. Oh, okay, okay.
Right now, a couple percent, but I will say the benefit of being able to have real numbers, so rather than giving the citizens a. A range or a speculation of an estimate, part of the reason why they end up, uh. Kind of protesting, uh, notifications, you know, they, there is a bid also on the project. So that back in March, it was still probably somewhat premature, if we were actually gonna bid the project this year and actually go through and. Start construction, given the state of supply chains and everything else in March, but now they were able to actually have a real number based on.
Right, because before it would have been on an estimate.
Right.
Which is what we're trying to get away from. Okay? Any other concerns, thoughts on this one?
Anyone from that group here that filed a protest?
Yeah, I don't know, is there anybody here that did file a protest, want to speak? I think there is, but. Okay.
So Mr. Mayor, the next up in this will be a resolution declaring insufficient protests to proceed.
Okay. Someone want to make that motion? Lucas, say it again, their resolution declaring.
Insufficient protests were received.
And that's based on the 8% approximate number.
Correct.
Well, I think that's pretty straight forward. I'll make the motion declaring. Insufficient protests received.
Okay, so Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second, all right, all in favor say aye.
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 They all pose. Passes, right, ID agreement, Lucas, you got that one?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, um, so it's our standard ID agreement that the city uses. Reflects the actual most recent numbers that we have, Jim sent us some numbers today, so I sent an updated. Jim sent revised numbers, so I sent an updated, uh, ID agreement to Brendan, I don't know if you guys have or not.
What was the change?
The dollar amount for the. Total cost of the project, so section five, the total cost of, uh, the engineer's opinion, probably. That includes all the soft costs that the city has, $21,414,000. Engineer, or excuse me, the developer, required to provide a letter of credit to be known of 65% of the local costs, so that letter of credit amount would be. Uh, $5,219,500, which the developer already provided to the city, signed by the bank. Four sections that got changed in that. All land dedication, developer agrees to dedicate lot one, block one, and lot five, block three of Cub Creek second edition to the Horace Park District. And pay $257,700 as payment, whoa, land dedication. Not something that was agreed to, but the city council already went through the planning procedures, water will be provided by Caserole. Jim has included those costs in the district, and then Caserole will bond to those costs. Form sewer will go into those big pond lots that were constructed on lot 48, block six, lot 51, block six of Cub Creek condition. It's like, the city's gonna work with game fish and developers to see if we can support recreational fishing on those pond lots as well. That should be as far as any. Provisions ever made to that ID agreement. That was attached to it. We're gonna be looking for a motion to approve the improvement district agreement for Cub Creek second.
I do have one question, you touched on the, um. And how the letter of credit amount is calculated. Um. It appears only, so it's just none of the, what can you just? There's only certain costs that are included in it.
Yeah.
Can you discuss what costs are associated with a project that are not included in, in the calculation for the letter of credit?
The regional improvements, uh, were not included for that letter of credit requirement, thought being that the developer shouldn't have to provide a letter of credit to cover. Other properties' regional benefit. So like for those pond lots, those are to the benefit of that entire improvement district, it's not a meat and bone area.
The letter of credit dimensions, as the lots are developed, and that's not in developers' control, you have a regional component of the regional. Possess land, that may be not even helped. Although that will drop off a letter of credit if you include the region.
And then it also doesn't include, right, the, it does include the soft costs, which is the engineering, the legal administration, so that's about. Uh, three, $3 million.
Yeah.
Okay.
Regional improvements for this project for the, the retention bonds, 83rd Avenue South, 88th Avenue South. Uh, and then certain sanitary sewer infrastructure.
This is done similarly to other projects we've done before?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I didn't realize that the. I didn't realize it was gonna be such a sizable amount of money that was included in the letter of credit calculation, so it's really. Letter credit 65%, 35% to the city plus about $3 million of unsecured.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but the total construction cost, or just the construction cost, this was around $17,000, $815,000, 16, 16, 995, yeah. So. Around 8 million of that is the developer's obligation, and it's 65%. For that, oh, letter of credit. Yeah, the, the city council decided to take out soft costs last year.
Couple of those from two, three years ago.
Changes every year.
Hopefully not. Okay, any other questions on the ID agreement? And we looking for a motion to accept that? Okay, anyone makes a motion, can I get a second? Sarah, a second, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Good bid review.
Right, Mr. Mayor, bid were opened, uh, on September 28th, 2022, at 2:15pm. Didn't receive bids from two time factors.
Can you stop, say that date one more time, please?
Uh, September 28th.
And call off the one bid too far to be held open?
Sixty days.
Sixty days, how close are we to that point by the 40? I think four days, thank you.
Uh, two bids were received, one from DPH, the other from Code Underground. Uh, one of the bids was that of DPH, they want, uh. Well, base bid was. Or all the alternates was, okay, hold on, okay, so base bid, well, from KPH was $60,111,036. There were three alternates, bid as part of the product, number one was for fully cast casting. Recommendation to prove that, however, so a lot still close off with the gas seats, who want to try these asphalt, they'll see a more. Line, they will surface, so they will bump, they still above off of them, so that's a $52,700 increase. Option two was for fiber concrete sidewalk reinforcement, which, um, was an additional $769,433. And it's not the full amount because there was standard reinforcing, standard reinforcing was for. Roughly five, six. Seven hundred thousand dollars sold, around sixty thousand dollar increase to go with the fiber reinforcements, where there is steel reinforcing, there was a fiber mixed into the mix. They've got some good luck with that and other projects, so. This one was one we're going to try that on.
It was an adder for fiber reinforcing, is that a part steel bar?
Yes. Bit of both ways. It was a bit of both ways. And then the last was for pond landscaping. And. Basically, it has to do with the size of the trees and some curb and gutter with the. Park portion of it. First option was for trees, large deciduous trees. With curb and gutter landscaping, now one was. About fifty-five thousand dollars, and the option B. Was for small deciduous trees and the large deciduous tree, no. Pond landscaping, that's. About fifty thousand dollars. So the recommendation would be, this was a. About a million dollars, million and a half dollars less than fifteen underground. And right between the two was where the engineer's estimate was, so one more in the estimate, one higher than the estimate, so.
It was a million dollars lower than the engineer's estimate, right? Almost a million dollars lower.
When is this?
Are they supposed to start?
Yeah.
Estimates contract signed and returned, so. I got emailed today. Basically, they did, they want to start. Absolutely.
Being the apparent whole bit.
They being the apparent whole bit. If.
I guess what I do. I got, I got some. So. I guess I'll start off. This particular contract. On that one, but more than one. I'm concerned about how they will perform on this project, however. This is a private. Project. And it doesn't impact us nearly as much as it would.
It's still a public project.
I'm sorry.
It's still a public project.
I understand this, there's, there's a couple different ways to look at it, right? Um. That being said, I don't want to minimize. Any weight put. On the protest thing, although I voted in favor of a lack of majority, because eight percent is not a majority. It doesn't mean that cost savings, these people is not a problem. Right, so. Million dollars below the engineer's estimate on the bid is a pretty significant amount of cost. That said. We're on a crux as a council, we'll have to make a decision. And I want to do what's best for. The majority of our community, right, so as many people involved as possible. Um. Cost savings speak volumes. Performance speaks volumes, we're going to be talking a lot of. Responsible bidder policy and or slack ordinance here. Further on down the agenda. That being said, we don't have anything in place. When that comes out. So I want to open it up for discussion with the rest of the councils, what your thoughts are on this, because this is a pretty significant project. Um. The fact that this amount is almost a seventy million dollar reward. To the people. And I want to make sure that word is on for them, because I can only take so many phone calls from Dawn. When someone doesn't perform.
Are they gonna put down the shovels in the spring and finish up? Where? They should have been up. Just wondering.
All right, Lucas. So I I will say with this, as. The city has grown. Grown into issues, issues that it's had with contractors. And I feel like the city for us has always been very cooperative with contractors to. To work with them to just get these projects done. Uh, in amicable ways, amicable, amicable as possible. But I think needs to happen more in the future, is more reliance on the EJ CDC contract that's entered into between the city and the the contract. Get these projects done, the timelines that are provided in these documents, and to stand by these documents, and to go through the enforcement procedures that are actually outlined therein, instead of this. You know, can you get it done by this date, can you get it done by this date, can you get it done by this date, it's more of a. Get it done by this date, or we're doing this.
Yeah.
And the city hasn't done that yet. And so I think.
The city is disgusted.
Yes. And so I think.
There, there have been a few of us. Me, namely, pushing that process, because I'm not going to be able to this again with this company.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm all for it, and that's why that agreement is there, and so, but I'm saying, I, I think that these conversations need to be had with contractors, saying that, you know, we've tried to be nice in the past, but going forward. We're sticking to the terms of this agreement, and you need to comply with the terms that you're signing onto that are all in in this agreement. And, you know, we go from there, like you said. The responsible bidder policy is not in place yet. And I don't know what conversations have had with. Certain contractors that the city is having issues with, but I think conversations need to be had with them to say. Going forward. The, the city is sticking to the terms of these agreements. Can you get it done? On the dates that are provided in the agreement.
What's interesting is I had that exact conversation with this particular contractor prior to the most recent project, but they're still not completed with, and I was told to my face. No problem, we will prepare, but we will get it done, so. Actions speak louder than words with me right now. And there's no amount of talk that they can provide to me that is going to give me any sense of security. Now, I want to be very clear that it is not, this contractor is not alone. There is more than one that has been difficult with this city, so. I do want to open it up to the rest of council to give them an opportunity, and I will be very firm with enforcement on this contract, and I am expecting, if we go this route. That interstate will look up there and will bargain. As far as enforcement.
And I, I talked to other city attorneys about this issue too, and they said they're dealing with the same thing with contractors, just not getting these projects done, and I run into with other clients too. Where. They're, they're missing completion dates, and I don't know if they're bidding. Into the project that they're going to have, liquidated damages or what, but it's, it's not just Horace that's having this issue.
It was explained to this contractor and one other previously, that every time that they miss a deadline, it costs us money. In the case of the water project. We have to keep this project open, which means we have to pay interstate monitoring and those types of things, so. If they think that I'm not going to enforce liquidated damages or any other damages costs that are going to the city, that's always mistaken, because. This is people's money that we're working with, and we're very prudent on how we spend it, although we, we are spending a lot right now for infrastructure and growth. We need to make sure that we're spending it wisely, so that not lose.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm concerned because we're supposed to finish up. This project, and now it's going into next summer. And. I don't know, are they going to be able to put the shovels down and come back over to Old Horace and fix what they need to do? Um, that's my concern, because I'm the one that lives in Old Horace, and nobody else up here has to deal with what I deal with, with my water.
So Lucas, I'm curious. That this was just making a problem. Is it possible? So look at the possibility of making this award contingent. On the letter being received from the contractor, that they will complete the Horace water project. Even though they're a regular. Can we do that? I hate to tie the project.
I don't know if we can tie the project.
I don't like, it's actually, wasn't there an issue with? Getting a vote or something?
That's.
I don't know if we can do that, I just, I, we need to.
And so, so exactly what you're saying is what that new policy addresses too.
Right, but if you award this before that policy is in place, is it something?
Well, that policy is in place because I wanted to say to have something in writing. There's, there's already been cases and A J opinions that give discretion to the governing body on awarding. To the lowest responsible bidder.
Responsible.
Correct.
Hey, anybody else?
Yeah. Um. So, so right now, Jim. And I don't mean to put you on this about, but I think you have this answer, is, are they going to be requesting? Um. Any kind of leniency, because we've moved into winter now. Um, for the previous project that has not been completed. And how long do we have to put up with that, uh, they promised for over a year and a half? That this project would be done, they moved the date many times.
Three times, two days.
Okay, so, do we? Assign liquidated damages every single day through the winter? Is that possible?
With the contractor, yes.
Okay. And I'm not trying to do that, what I'm trying to do is trying to get that project completed.
I agree. But I don't know if we can hold this project hostage then.
And I'm not trying to hold this one hostage.
Trying to hold it hostage, I think it's a conversation that involves. Trying to figure out, can we get both projects?
That, that is, her question is perfect, it's, are they going to put the shovels down over there to come back over here to finish? Now, you also have a third project sitting out there that none of us really care anymore about, but obviously, they're going to ask for an extension on that one as well.
We care, and that's also on my radar.
So, how many other projects are going to come and be low bidded? By approximately one point three five million dollars? Before we say enough is enough? And, and the only way to fix the problem is to be able to assign all those liquidated damages. As they come by. That is the only way to stop it, literally.
So.
Well, he'll, he'll stop them.
Correct.
They, they just will say screw it. Or.
Then you'll lose your competition though, too.
Would they bid, the price is going to be so high, it's too robust, so it, it's really a catch torn situation, but. I, I think there's just some very valid.
That's ridiculous. Unfortunately.
And, and no to liquidated damages, it's not a penalty. The city has to essentially improve. Expenses. Actual damages type deal, so Jim, interstate's time, to monitor my time that I've had to spend since. Uh, since that substantial final completion date have expired, any administrative costs that, right, that, that the city has expended, I mean. We, the city is going to have to go through a process on any L Ds. To try to quantify that, so, so know that too, that just because.
It's not, it's not this.
Has in the contract that there's fifteen hundred dollars a day. After final completion, that's not a guarantee. It's not a penalty, as soon as you say it's a penalty, the court will take it right out.
Okay.
We hear, we're talking about L Ds.
True, so in our specs, we have a positive that they have the knowledge that determining the exact, exact amount of liquidated damage that's. incurred by the city is difficult. They are acknowledging that the amount set for in the contract is going to be the default.
And I, I've got that. It makes it pretty clear, it makes it pretty clear.
Yeah. Kind of ridiculous how many times we make them acknowledge that.
Yeah.
Liquidated damage is part of things.
And I don't want anyone to misunderstand, it's not our intent here to roast anyone or put anyone on our business, but. When we're awarding contracts of this size and nature, we do expect.
Well, it's our taxpayer dollars, the residents of Horace deserve.
You're right, right.
We deserve better than that. And that's why we're here.
And I, I share all of your, of your concerns too, and of course, not making any excuses, but I, I think at the end of the day, it probably comes down to the simple problem of staffing for them, and that's where my concern is with Naomi. You know what I mean, spreading them, uh, a, any contractor, spreading themselves too thin on projects. Um. I, I like Lucas's idea of more of a strict contract enforcement.
To think is what we're going to get to, because we've talked about this before.
I don't, I don't. Yeah. But I am going to say that I will be needing. And expectations laid out. Yeah, some things put in place, and I don't care if it's as much as a. We've been meeting, dividing, I don't care, we're going to do something here to make sure that what we've seen that seems to be the norm is no longer the norm.
I'm, I'm just very concerned, but.
I'd like to know what the plan's going to be for finishing the other project.
Yeah.
After this one started, yes.
I can say a objective one a little bit, uh, obviously, we have a very large. Adjustment as well.
Yep.
Uh. The. Partners in, in this, uh, so we actually had some conversations about it, we. Work with interstate sets of milestones, so that we can have some progress gains as well, uh, try to go through. Uh, part of the reason why they want to get started now is that much of that. Large excavation can be done over the winter time, that will, they have crew that's have it now freed up from the diversion, so trying to get the bulk of that done. In so far as talking with the different contractors this summer, trying to figure out how we could stage this and everything else, in terms of. Uh, R C P or culber size piping. Uh, excavation of these ponds, because this is, it's several hundred thousand yards.
It's a large undertaking.
So, you know, we tried to pre-plan this, talking with some of the contractors as to how we're going to need everything else, so we. Tried to preempt as much of this as possible, I can't speak to the other projects, but what I have been. Let them leave. Is that obviously different. Craftsmen and crews doing water service prepares and rehab versus. So you know, paving and curb and gutter and. Operators that are driving hopper trucks are not the same operators that would maybe be driving something over the rehab. Again, I, I don't, I'm not, you're advocating one way or the other, but I too want to go on record and say, we have shared of your.
Well, that's very, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, this contractor actually subcontracted to another contractor who said, we're not going to do this anymore. Because we're going to leave the hard ones for you to do, so. They're going to have to do it. They're going to be the ones doing it, I don't think they're going to find another contract subcontractor to come on over to Old Horace and get their job done for them, so.
I think to your point, it'd be good to have these milestones and.
As long as you're on board with that, I'm on board with it, I'd like to see a little more aggressive handling of contract administration in this particular case, and if we can all agree with that. That I have no issue taking a motion for award. But. I will state that we are learning from the past. And. Failing on this will be a terrible mistake.
Okay, so Sarah, you making a motion then, accept the Code Underground's bid?
We make that.
Okay, KPH, I'm sorry. Can we? Make some light within your motion, making the contractor acknowledge that. The. City was wood wickled for, uh, war number thirty, for sixty days, they don't come back and say, well, you cost us something once. By not awarding it. Two months ago.
You've got a comment sitting there.
I do, it is in the document now, but I see what you're saying.
I wanted.
Because they'll, they'll stay next year.
We could have started then.
We could have started two months ago, but you all brought me the tea. And I don't.
They could have started two months ago, because they had other crews working, they had other priority.
You were a nice little.
They don't need this, they can give me a money and do no what.
They're going to.
I know they're going to, that's why I have heartburn.
I agree completely, and that's why I want something from them acknowledging that they realize the city was well within their order to award it.
All right.
Up to fifty.
Mend your motion, Sarah.
I was going to say, I, I'm not sure the proper wording, Lucas, help me to get this, but I. I'll, I'll start with something, maybe you can.
First, send your first motion.
I will rescind the previous motion. I can't amend it?
Yes.
Now I can send, what, what am I?
Fine.
All right.
There was no second, I'm going to rip it now so much.
What was it say?
There was no second.
I will, uh, join it and amend the, the first motion. To include that the city is open to sixty days planning on it for award. To KPH. For the.
Yeah, we need the.
Water sewer storm improvement district number twenty-two dash eleven for concrete second addition.
Do you award in base bid, alternate one B, alternate two B?
Actually, what was the recommendation, because I know I've, I've been awarded, but I'd like to hear the.
Recommendation with low bid, plus alternate one B, alternate two B, and alternate three B.
One B, two B, and three B? So all these.
I'm, I'm open to the base bid, I have no difficulty with, um, one B for the floating asphalt crossings. I don't like. I don't like the concept of the fiber concrete sidewalk reinforcement. Um, I like additional reinforcement, and I think that additional cost, six to one, I don't think you're getting anything great for that. Um, and then, but, but the landscaping, I am a fan of, that was a pretty minimal item, and so uh, why are we not doing the park landscaping, especially?
The what?
I think we just.
I think it has to do with the park district, park district, their, their bombing money. No, they're not, they don't need that.
Was it possible that that was missed?
No, I think it's less money. It's sixteen, sixteen thousand dollars, like, almost seventeen thousand dollars.
You do what?
We deserve the shirt apartment, we have the premium prepared better, and uh, when I remove their, yeah, they remove their better, because trees largely fall.
Why wouldn't they just do that in a park?
Because I think it's a pond landscaping, start landscaping.
Okay.
That's because I can't read, because there are people that are going to tell someone we're starting. We should not do the park lands, this part of the.
We would do the parks, not the pond.
We would do the pond and not a park. The pond landscaping with the prized uh, landscaping, some of the trees along the bike path that go between the tree, which is not necessarily part of the park, we wanted to do that, but we didn't have the park full thing. Again, trying to get as much in upfront as we can, so people know that their special assessment is here and not next year, the year after that.
Right.
Every tree we plant, so, but we do want to go with the trees that would be along the bike path of around the ponds. I, I think it's the distinction between the park land.
Yeah.
Which would be those two individual lots of park, we didn't get into that design, but we do want to, our reporting of the landscape here.
What's our thoughts on having some of those ones in front of contingency so that these people aren't hit again in the district if there's a.
You mean in the park area?
In there with that contingency, so I think if we could get plan tighten up with what we could do with that, we use all of it for planting trees.
I, I'm, I'm not opposed to the trees along the walking path, I think the, the, the amount of residents that are going to be in this area will appreciate cave and, and the wind break, right? And I think that's worth something to them, and at this point, if I, you know, this money's minimal, it doesn't decide the district. Jim, can we add any pond landscaping as well?
That's the one that you should have picked up.
Or the, the park landscaping.
Uh, so the park board is the one that, um, they did not want the landscaping crew around, they wanted that they want. Yes, we can add it in. They, they talking just about what's inside.
How do you guys feel about that? So that we're not hitting people, we have a little bit of a contingency or things that may come up, um.
Kim homeless with that being roughly.
They're gonna put the park, the park one, seventy-eight, no, seventy-nine, no.
Are you talking for both the large and the urban gutter?
Um, so it's seventy-nine thousand, we chipped up late.
For both.
For the park landscaping and the pond is another.
How do you guys feel about that?
Not, not opposed, but what's the, what does the connectivity between the special assessment district and, and the park district? When you say it's park, park landscaping, is that falling in the purview of park district?
It would reimburse the city, that's what they're doing on, they'll farm pocket park, cities paying for it, parks reimburses, they get it however they get their money.
Okay.
See, and there's cash.
Let's get something for that extra half a bill, huh?
Yeah.
Roughly a hundred.
Can that buy?
A hundred sixteen, seventeen.
I, I just, I, I think that's kind of a framer, but it's not my call, I want to make sure that others are. Because that communication of our city, and it is.
Yeah, go ahead and make the motion.
I'm kind of.
I'll make, uh, I'll, I'll.
May I amend it? There we go, we go.
This is small, reading that motion.
Grab another sheet there, bro.
Here's still one.
Okay. Sorry, you know what I mean.
Or is not there yet?
Sarah, I really can't read you that, but I have. A motion to award the city motion to award, city can withdraw or withhold contract for sixty days and acknowledge met per K P H. Base bid, alternate one, B, two B, three B, or the pond.
Oh, I thought Sarah said a, um, two.
Option.
Two B. There you go. The base, then you want alternate one. One B, two.
My gosh!
Two.
B.
One B, two B, three A, three B.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you got it wrong.
Three, nobody was adding ways to, I think.
All right, so Sarah made the elongated uh, motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, definitely has a second, all right? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
But I'm just.
I have a motion. Turn for all of you.
You're in. I'll be calling again.
Okay, Lucas, you got nine. Let's keep the show rolling here.
Yes, so uh, Mr. Mara gave you the preamble resolution for San Bon series twenty twenty-two.
Let me watch and look at this, it's a little thick, but.
Yes, like twenty-three pages of reading, but it's really not too bad. So, San Bon series twenty twenty-two B, which is just going to cover about three, second edition at this point, the parameters resolution is setting uh, who's on the pricing committee, which is the mayor, the administrator, which is, that's always the pricing committee, uh, and then it's setting not to exceed amount for the bonds at twenty-six million dollars, and then not to exceed uh, interest rate of six point five percent, so those are the three main items, pricing committee, uh, not to exceed dollar amount, and then the interest. We have Mike Mass from here from Colliers, he can discuss further if you guys have uh, questions. John is also here from Colliers, he's tied back there, uh, so any question for twenty twenty-two B for the parameters resolution?
Pete Mike, remember the good old days when we're trying not to exceed three, four?
Do another term or something. I think after the seedlings conversation, everybody will understand this is the easy part, Cove Creek second edition. And we have six and a half percent in as an out to exceed interest rate, just so you know. We believe that we could price the bonds today, we can post the five and a half percent, who will be under six and a half? We're targeting five and out to five point seventy-five right now. That includes, we should be priced uh, the first week in December, we should be finished with this, this gives us an opportunity, pre-sell the bonds to interested investors and institutions. Biswalk office, Fargo office, and Minneapolis office will all be working on pre-selling. Right now, we're at twenty-four million, two hundred ninety thousand, that shouldn't change. Um, and when we pre-sell the bonds, if we have margins for thirty million at six percent, we'll only need twenty-four million, we will then go back to the uh, interested investors and reduce the rate from six percent to five point nine percent. Investors will begin to fall out until we get to twenty-four million, three ninety, or somewhere close, if it's twenty-three million, we'll take down in our own portfolio, so, um, that's, that gives us the opportunity to find the most cost effective financing for the city, the lowest interest rate in today's market. Today's market is next week, that's when you'll be working on these bonds. We have the V double A two rating back in place from S and T, I think there's all that. Brent and, and Lucas and everyone has worked hard on that, there's Corey's on the phone call, so. We're in place with that investor system, it's the first time, our first rodeo with Horace, so we know where the investors are. We know what institutions, what insurance companies, we reach out once we call. Now, we'll sell the bonds, and we'll be back at the interest rate side of the topic. Six and a half seems high in today's world, we didn't know, we had fifty basis point swings going on a month ago in a day. Uh, we don't want to not stop the project, we can't come to cover you with anything over six and a half, and if we tell you with this point two five, and Corey and Brent said we don't like that, we'd still go away. You don't have to accept the interest rate, we have to come back with an interest rate that the pricing committee agrees to.
That's helpful.
And just, I guess for my clarification, I guess I wasn't clear, are we talking about the financing for Cove Creek?
Exactly.
Okay, that wasn't really, it wasn't clear on the, it wasn't clear on the agenda, what, what we were talking about.
Everybody, it's kind of like construction loan.
Right.
And then, project is basically done, we'll come back and do the permanent financing. Check that is, so that way, when we do have to do the special assessments, we're a lot more accurate on how much we're assessing this.
We should be legal definitive financing on the last temporary loans.
First.
Or spring, or spring, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Mike?
Oh, God, we're getting. What was the interest rate on that one?
I don't remember exactly, but it was certainly closer to three and a half percent.
I'm just curious.
It's the overall percentage. Uh, what we like is that at least the interest rates have come now. It doesn't do any good to any of us for our retirement portfolios and the stock market, but stability is what drives stock market right now, and the interest rates, we just know for sure five B's gonna be five percent from where the day, and the market's still, so, and that's what seems to be occurring.
I believe it's like two, it was a year and a half, a year ago, we did a pump on it, one six.
Yeah, we actually. That's the most free money, that's a hundred percent stuff.
Yeah, that was nice. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks, Mike, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I'm gonna.
Six, seven, eight.
Six and a half percent, twenty-six million. Eric, right, that's the pricing.
Yep.
You mean like twenty-six million after it's all said and done, like with the interest rate, or?
The bonds of the city will take all the money, exceed twenty-six million.
We're pricing twenty-four million, three ninety. And it just depends if there's premium bond sold. It adds to the number, we can then reduce the size of the bond issue, you'll be close to the twenty-four million, three ninety, or on.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I want to look for a motion to accept the parameters resolution.
I will make a motion to accept the parameter. It's gotta be a record, isn't it?
Oh, no.
No.
No, it's not the biggest one, big one is what, thirty?
When this one started, it was.
It would have been.
We had everything in there.
We did pull two developments out of this, that's, they just weren't ready.
Yeah.
Uh, if we did have them ready to go, then yeah, would have been the biggest one, but no sense bonding the money, so.
We needed.
We're ready to move there, so, especially with the interest rates, you know, given a few months.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay, so Sarah makes a motion again, if there's a second, okay, all in favor, say aye. All right, Carrie's going, and Lucas, Brenton, who wants to pick this one up?
I, I can take this one, so, your last beating, then you tasked me with creating a responsible bidder policy, and see if we can get it done weeks, um, it is done. Hope you guys like it, at least gives the city something in writing, or if we do have any, you make sure problem contractors, we can rely on this policy, um. And then possibly even going forward.
Do other cities have something like this?
No. I created this scrap, pretty rough. But I did have to do some digging uh, into North Dakota law, which as I said earlier, provides the governing body with discretion to choose who is considered the lowest responsible bidder, it's not just based on the city taking the lowest dollar amount.
Okay.
Um, and so there's, there's a couple of cases, and it's attorney general opinion uh, that basically said, you know, when, when the governing body is giving certain reasons as to fight, the low bidder is not the best bidder, the courts will uphold that decision and give them discretion if you're basing it on something that is valid. So we did with this responsible bidder policy is say, okay, city of Horace is growing with all these projects going on, we're running into these issues, we need to make sure that city is picking the right contractors to get these projects done, because like you guys have said continuously tonight, we're spending public funds, we want to ensure that the public is getting the best product possible. So we have a purpose, that's our purpose section for this policy, and our general section is where we're getting our legal authority for this policy, and that's those two cases, and then attorney general opinion that uh, lay out what is actually considered, uh, or who is actually considered a responsible bidder. Uh, and so that's the definition that's then provided in there. Uh, so, North Coast statute actually said that the lowest responsible bidder is the lowest best bidder for the project considering past experience, financial condition, past work with the governing body, and other pertinent attributes that may be identified in the advertisement for bids. So just that definitional alone lets you guys know that it's not just who has the, the low bids to these projects. Um, but instead of just relying on a definition, now we're getting into the, what criteria is the city of Horace going to utilize for these contracts? Uh, and this uh, information I was taking from here is actually used by federal government, and how they will analyze who is considered a responsible contractor, so I won't get into all of those, but there's essentially eight criteria that are outlined in this policy that the city will then look at with these contractors. Be financially capable of doing, what has been your, our past experience with you, uh, on some of these other projects, what is your current workload? Um, are you good in the community, I mean, just anything you can think of, what is the, the actual contract I can see for a specific project? Are you able to complete the specifications that are within that contract? Uh, and so again, having something in writing that the city can rely on, like, in making this decision. So then, section four gets into how a determination will be made. Because you guys obviously are busy, you guys have full-time jobs, it's not your job to always go through and see who is actually bidding on these projects to determine if they're responsible, so my thought was, your city staff is on that, looks at all these bids upfront. Um, Jim in Interstate did the bids, Brent's always there, uh, they know contractors that are going to be hitting on this project. So my thought was, start with city staff consultants, have them make a, a recommendation similar to what the planning commission does to the city council, and say, okay, we think that these contractors are responsible, if you want to award the lowest bid, go for it, uh, they're all responsible, they're all deemed responsible by us. That at the end of the day, city council decision, so, city council disagrees, certainly can, um, and then.
During like, like, let's say, if it was, you can say it's like tonight, let's just say Jim would have had told us, according to our form, that, 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 such and such would not be.
In my opinion, my recommendation, I don't think the responsible bidder could require, and that's why uh, we've included in our determination form, so it is something that is a standard practice for every contractor, it's okay, here's the project, here's the bidder that we're talking about, here's who reviewed, um. Review made that conclusion, so.
Can this form be put in our pocket when it's spelled out?
That's.
Okay.
That's what we provide for then, so essentially when the, when the city advertises for bids, they'll get three bidders, let's say, so then city staff will go through, fill up this form with whatever bidder it is, and then when we have like the uh, project award at tonight's meeting, you guys would have three of these to review and then see what staff's recommendation is, if that's how you guys want to perceive it, if that's not how it needs to be done, that's just what I thought would work, it's something that's simple, it's a two-page document, it's something that shouldn't take a lot of time for city staff to complete.
And maybe, maybe it's something that we look at on anything that's, you know, over two million dollars or something.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I understand that email too of, do you want to set a threshold?
Right.
It's not.
The threshold was something I was interested in, because I don't need to see this for every eight hundred thousand dollar, we're gonna go catch the street. You know, what I need to see this on is some major project of what we discussed tonight, to determine that we have competent contractors getting this work, and then we're not running into some of the difficulties and the growing pains that we have over the last couple of years now. Does this prevent someone from having a bad day, week, or year? No, it doesn't. But it puts us in a much better capacity to make an informed, adequate decision based on our customer.
So, Lucas, there was a comment that was meant to be asked on the in this room, I won't bring many names, but um, he had said that we should be careful when we start looking at responsible better policies, just to make sure that we're not. I won't bring many names, but, um, he had said that we should be careful when we start looking at responsible bidder policies, just to make sure that we're not. I don't know what the word, what you said.
Basically setting yourself up to get sued.
Yes.
No, you gotta be careful, I think.
How you, you saw you implement, because that, when you have a little bit of environment, it's very touchy.
Yeah.
Very touchy subject, where, and yeah, uh, the contractor doesn't agree with you. There could be some challenge.
Right, so then, Lucas, my question is, you think that this is a safe policy?
I like this, it's, it's standard, everyone's gonna be, everyone is gonna have to apply to the same thing, so every contractor, no matter what, and I do like the idea of that threshold. Uh, and so I, I did send that in my email saying that is something that the city should think about. It's something that we have in writing now, and we can base any decisions that you guys might have, start with this policy, look at that form, and then we're gonna have a conversation like we're having tonight. I'll take my notes, do whatever we need to do to make sure that if you guys think that someone is not a responsible bidder, that we now have it in place to support that decision. So that's why we're taking this additional step, that's why Horace is gonna have a policy. If this happens.
Like, and, and like you just said, and, and I want to point out a couple of points, because. When Lucas talked to us, he said, you know. You're not always gonna be able to control everything, right? And, and what the contractor does is ultimately what the contractor does, but this provides us the basis to make sense. Now, Val made a very good point too, when he said, you know, something like the water project is a, requires a lot more technical expertise. In plumbing and, and equipment operation, not everybody can hop in an excavator, but just what everybody can hop into a, like, some triaxle dump truck. So, and those are the types of things that we're talking about, skill sets, skill levels, you know, maybe they can man a, a, a basic dirt project, but they can't man a water project. This is gonna help us determine that, is this contractor right for the job? And that's something that I think we need to take some prudent steps in, which is why I was very adamant on my question this, thank you for getting this.
I'd love to look and see what that dollar value would be for what we consider to be the floor, you know, what we're gonna start with. It was two million, right, number three, five, I don't know what is, you know, big projects now are. Getting up.
Certainly, yeah, certainly seems sort of changed since.
Yeah, since early days, yeah.
So it's funny, I want to ask you just a, a few is, when you implement a policy like this, we can do, make sure that if you implement something like that, it's done. Or you'll bid a project, not mid-street.
Right.
So you have to maintain some rules, to a contractor, you want to work that.
Right, I also want to know.
Projects, you know, they're, they're, so that helps.
Should this, and I think Lucas just came from the view in, in one of the backend forms that I went through with this particular revision. Should this remain a policy or should this be?
I want your test margins, but under time constraints.
Yeah.
Because I did it as.
I'd say we start out as a policy and let's make sure that it meets our needs, uh, like we're looking, that we think it's gonna do. And I think there, after that, if it's, if we all agree that this is meeting what we're doing, let it go for a year as a policy, then we can make an ordinance if you want to.
That's fair, I would just see, I mean, Lucas, if, are you in agreement with that statement, or would you like?
Just because you guys, I mean, as a council, no, you already have this authority, this ability, it's there. The North Dakota law supports that, all we're doing is saying, pay contractors, here it is, and this is what we're gonna be going, going.
But you're wait, you're okay waiting a year before you put it into an ordinance?
Well, I mean, it's in writing, whether it's in ordinance or in the policy, it's just as long as we stick to it, is what I care, well, and that, we're not just doing it for one project, and we're not doing it for the next.
Right.
That's where I am concerned.
I am very happy with this, I'm very glad we had this conversation at the last meeting, thank you, Lucas, for putting this together, so.
So the one reason I'm talking about keeping it as a policy right now is because it's something that's brand new, all right, we haven't. Like you said, other cities haven't done this either, but I'd like to just, we can leave it as a policy for a year, and let's make sure that this does what we think it's gonna do.
And, and a recommendation that might consider is, send it to the contractor, send it to some of your favorite contractors and see if they have any partner with them, I don't think they will. As if you've got good contractors that know that they can provide good work, they're not gonna have any issues.
There shouldn't be any reason why they would pocket this at all, really.
So, uh, another comment, Jim, actually came from some of the backend boards, and I want to know if council feels that this would help us or hinder us, handicap us. One of the comments made was that the low bidder has an open contract with the city that are past or beyond the completion date, will they be considered non-responsive?
Hmm.
What would that do?
What do you consider non-responsive?
Non-responsive to?
As a bidder.
Responsible.
For additional bits, if they can't complete a project their own, do you want?
For further.
I think that if they're late, so yeah, I mean, that might.
Also, that's in, that's already in there, so it's in section three. Three.
Past performance.
Three, yeah.
Three B three.
Any past decision is not called a bidder.
Yeah.
Just something I will caution a little bit, though, if we start getting so tight on this stuff, we're not gonna have any contractors left to come into town here and do anything either, we have to be careful with that.
Well, but Lucas already said that it was in our authority before this piece of paper even came to us, so. It doesn't really much matter that we show them this or not, I mean, in my opinion, if he says that we've had this authority of any means.
Which we have.
Then why are you so worried about it?
Hey, we haven't had the point. Failure to finish or.
Correct. Whoops.
As much as.
This last year and a half.
We've also grown the next event, should we realize some more later, so. Some of these guys, like you said, they like to bid, they like to bid, they like to bid, they throw it out there and take their chances, well, seven, three, four, five minutes, come in, they're like, holy, how are we gonna do this?
Well, I think that shows that the city's serious.
Well, right, and honestly, like, my priorities would be our tax payer dollars here, like, I don't care about their feelings, I really don't. I care about the residents, so, I like it.
Councilmember, but to your point, it's the sentence, it says, uh, fast failure, if you apply sufficient tenacity, perseverance, and effort to perform acceptably, is strong evidence of non-responsible.
Ah, there it is, nailed it, perfect, thank you. I think it was, but I let's do this whole thing about five things.
I believe these got me.
Right, you've got me on the legalese, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Can we propose, uh, wh- what's a comfortable threshold? I would propose a two million dollar threshold at this time for a policy, and I think we can certainly adjust that.
You can change, if it's a policy, we can change at any time.
Yeah, how do you guys feel about starting there, if you want to go higher?
No, that'd be fine.
I'm just trying to think, so over the last.
You might be a little too old.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Uh, do we need to get three or five?
You go. Third, third, with the machine under.
Right.
So that's the size of project, then we get to about two million. Um, we got a little, the top sparrow with third, with, um, then. Four million dollar one.
I mean, so these are sizable, they don't.
We can, we can turn it to if you guys want, and then we can, like I said, we can adjust this at any time if we think that we're, you know, getting too much involvement on lower.
So, how much of the water project? Water, the water line and laser, water to the.
On the back path, I'd like six million.
So. That's, no, that's combined. I don't. I think it was around three or four. But if you look at typical overlays, five hundred thousand lots. Um, done, just that's gonna be a little bit of a million. Stations, I mean, there are more than two, I would be.
I feel like we should be involved. Like, just because of what we. Why, Lucas, why do you think to, why do you even choose to low? Choose.
Well, it's gonna come down to, we'll be involving a lot of different projects.
I used to talk. Yeah, that's what I mean, I guess, but no.
Well, maybe we spoke. What? That, that's about, I don't know, what it's like for me, but, but, because that's a more size. How do you feel?
I'm.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you're not, if like, city staff, consult, you guys should be comfortable with it, because you guys are gonna do the labor comment.
And this is not a charter form, it's just a call. Send me. I mean, you know. Well, can you confirm the schedule, send me a schedule, I mean, there's a problem with things in contracting that, uncontracted disguise should be provided, just like the onset, milestones, you're not. On the project of the size, so, I'm comfortable with that.
Two point five?
Let's just start there, who can adjust at this meeting?
Fine, we can adjust at the same time, we just need a start, two point five.
Are you doing this policy?
Absolutely.
So ordinance. It's offered.
First reading, second reading, and all that.
So, so discussion, are we taking any action on?
We have a discussion of it, because the nature of the policy, if there is any comments or feedback, council. Do make adjustments, we're able to, if it's not what's up.
I mean, I could, we should take a motion.
It's your guys' thought. Take a motion.
Way to change to the five million dollars.
That'd be your addition on this one.
I, I kind of don't screw around, but I want to see this in place. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, John Lucas.
All right. If you want to make a motion, go, go for it.
We'll jump on that, the motion to. Um, adopt. Our, city of Horace, responsible bidder policy with the amendment to the two point five million dollar threshold. Thank you, Lucas.
Okay, sir, made a motion, can I get a second? Can I get a second? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, okay, so Lucas, you make that modification, and we've got our policy in place.
Thank you all, and a lot of lessons.
Jim, Joel, who's got this one? Joel, okay.
I take it, I'm a nice of you. So we received a monthly development permit application for a home that is wanting to be built on a break or second. Um.
I'm sorry, could you say that one more time?
It's a.
Breakers, okay.
Hundred acres seconds.
Thank you.
So basically, the blood elevation down in that area is nine seventeen and a half. Uh, our city ordinance report is be two and a half. You about that, we're looking at nine twenty. Yeah. Nine seventy and a half, that's right there, but basically, they just needed that approval, um. Houses only have a, a waterproof crawl space, it's not gonna be a full basement. And the existing elevation is approximately nine sixteen, so they don't need to be adding, oh, two, three foot fill.
Are you guys okay with that? I mean, I know we're at the building.
It's a pretty standard form, yeah, just looking at, looking at the preliminary map that it's showing, the preliminary, because it's not enacted and concealed, the vision's completed. That all the other homes in that area are basically built to the same elevation.
Okay, that's my next.
Many of them already have basements, and they've got this one, will only have a crawl space.
Yeah.
But it's still need built to a flood crew, um, back for crawl space.
Right. So this increase, since my home was built just on the south side of it, um, at a nine eighteen point five, it went up.
Yeah.
Um, and that was done in what, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, or when was that?
Oh, I don't know the exact date, but yeah, it's, it's, in fact, if one is about that elevation, and then when they get to the preliminary one, drops down to nine seventeen and a half.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if your home's at, you know, a nine eighteen level or above that, you're technically out of the floodplain, but this regards all the structures we built, two and a half feet above. The floodplain, which is very similar to what Fargo and everybody that's sitting there.
Understood, I just, I have a lot of neighbors giving me questions right now as to how high they need to build their shop, top of the elevation of the foundation for their shop.
So according to this, it'd be the same thing, so if they're in that area, same area, that's nine seventeen and a half, you take that, add the two and a half feet, so it'd be the nine twenty. They need that, and for FEMA, it has to be that elevation fifteen foot away from structure.
Understood, yep, so nine twenty.
Yeah.
Even for a shop, got it.
If you don't have any, any flood insurance or anything, nine twenty is the magic number in that neighborhood.
Okay.
Are there ever any, I'm just curious, so are there ever any drainage issues that you need to look? At, you said most of the homes are in the same elevation, I mean, are there other, ever drainage issues that are, need to be evaluated?
At times there are, um, in this, this neighborhood, um, direct on the road, all the houses are way to way higher than in the road. And that, and the exit ditch is out there that seem to blow pretty well, so it's not as big of a concern here as if, as no old horse where everything's kind of flat and nothing drain.
Okay, I was just curious.
So, yeah, this, this whole development, I think, every house is at least at nine eighteen point five or higher.
Mm-hmm.
Um. It's, it's surprising that it's now nine twenty, um, just because when we had the flood back in two thousand eight or nine, it was still quite a ways away from, uh. Going higher than even the nine sixteen, but. Um, I, I understand what this neighbor is doing, so I have no problem with it, it's a little odd they're starting it now, um, there's snow on the ground, but.
Yeah, I don't know if they're starting it this fall, I know they said the fall, that gate and everything is, I don't know if they're just trying to get everything ready to do right away in the spring, or they're just gonna have to take a foundation.
They're starting, they're starting now. So.
Jim, any concerns from your side? This. Okay. That's. Or. Right, okay. Any other similar questions?
I don't.
I don't see any reason why me to can approve this. Okay, let me make some motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jump to the second. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. All right, Jim, you got the next one.
All right, design review meeting was held on Wall Avenue, full piece in West, up in the center of the moment. Fifth and Aston, meeting. Our staff, residency staff, to then. Fight with her. We talked about its excess information to my behalf, all on the same page as to what Wall Avenue project would do, started. Years ago, it's been needed for years, but just kind of, uh, what's gonna happen and what's gonna happen to the. Future, so, um, we all agreed that it was gonna be an architectural, please curb gutter concrete pavement from the bridge. Through the memory lane slash Lost River Road intersection. So that's gonna be, look like any standard city street, maybe a little bit higher, just because we've got some constraints to work with there. Uh, the question got to be a little west from that point. As you guys are aware, there's three entrances to the Lost River, first one is Lost River Road, second one is. Also. Like the Lost River. Wow, there, oh, Wild Rose, and then, no, no. So we talked about just doing a rural section, just asphalt pavement from that. Basically, it'd be just west of the Wall and memory lane, Lost River Road intersection, all the way out to the Devotee. And the question came up, maybe that should be curb gutter as well, just because. South side is a urban area, river in that second is coming along, it's gonna be coming along probably quicker than not, and that's gonna be all curb gutter. Um, so the thought was to potentially make that to be, um, a curb gutter section there too. So the question was brought up, was what's the kind of appeal of the entire city council, what is, what is the thought? The reason that even no curb gutter was considered on there was because of the past city council member of the maintenance, so. Um, comments from residents on that part of the world, and it just. Is the time now to, it's going to be Lost River West, Lost River, Lost River West.
Lost River West.
Lost River West, it's going to be built across the diversion, um, on the east, south of Wall Avenue. The fifth edition of Lost River pretty much built out, seventh edition of Lost River is going to be getting two or three houses started. And in this year, and that was just completed a year a month ago, so the traffic isn't gonna go away, uh, Jubilee, New Point. They've expressed interest in staying as a wider, lesser facility for stable future, but there will still be, there will be a second. Be a relatively large elevator, that traffic can go. We'll be able to, we'll be able to way up to and set this exactly down to the wall, I think, so. Um, cost-wise, you know, we've had some. Well, with fluctuations, and it's kind of been doing kind of the same, has the gap kind of minimized between concrete and asphalt. It's not really, I mean, it's still a substantial investment, we go to curb or gutter and concrete, so. Um, I have some stuff here, I'm not gonna make it present to you, this isn't a, this, this, this isn't a decision tonight, I'm more or less looking for input. In future meeting, probably the next one, I'll have this kind of cleaned up pretty up, and given to you, or a little more of a view. I just didn't want to drop something like this out of you tonight, but, so we're, we're thinking, the way that the. Bits and what our mission is, it's what the answer is, as to that, you know, for the two minutes, it's a quarter of a cost on seven and a half, it comes closer to nine, when you go to concrete. I'd be hard to hear.
All, all the way to the diversion.
Yes.
For curb and gutter, all the way to the diversion is nine.
Would be closer to the nine.
Okay, okay.
Or better.
And I think that was, I mean, there were some. Or whatever you mentioned at prior council, but I think also the biggest concern was caught simply cost.
Yeah.
Um, of doing a, a full, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, and that's why I want to bring it back.
Yeah.
City council, I don't, because, briefly. Saving grace, this is the east side of the, we'll have a, we'll have plans for your. Faster, we'll have a couple meetings, we'll have plans for your, we'll be submit out for bits, but it's this, uh. Additional area, I want to make sure that we get it done, get it done right. We're all on the same page as to what's going to happen, so we don't get a bill to say, oh, I don't know.
And and if I may. I I was in this meeting and I want to share my thoughts again. This is why we brought it here because I want to make share thoughts about this because. I don't know if we're all in line on this, so. You know, we knew it to leave the cities and we. About how much maintenance asphalt takes and and how much of an investment that is going to be really based on some replacement after it, you know, sold. So and then. I I've heard comments from this council coming back, so. How did we let Lost River get so far out of us and not through that road and not through the way, you know, and and then I started looking at it, we've got. Lost River West, we've got potential river search to. We're looking at the fifth edition, the seventh edition, we started putting the number of lots on it, having a call. I'd like to save that money, but. Do we put a third year road in? If we put a two year road.
We talked about this.
Right, and I'm, I'm fearful that we will put ourselves right back into some situation to have to have people pay for this place. And tear off that asphalt in the shorter amount of time first putting curb gutter instead of spending the extra, you know, million and I think it's right. To do it and never have to go back, never, maybe never have to reroute, people never have to shut things down. I don't know, guys.
Especially if your specials stretched out over twenty five years, you're going to end up paying for the special. Still, while you could be rebuilding it for a second time.
I I don't know what's right or wrong, but I know some of you guys live there. I know cost was a big issue, and so. Before we made this decision, we felt this is really important to bring it back here and say, you know. What are your guys' stuff? Do you like some kind of, what do you think about this? Because that was where I was made, but. I'm not all of you.
It goes back to the special. You know, the city doesn't have to build a full temporary road for ten, fifteen years, at least, I don't know, maybe you think you do have the ability to float it.
No.
If it gets that, are you, I know the road is going to be perfectly acceptable to most people, and then you talk about when this. Get to a point where it's not, then you want to rebuild it, and people, oh, it's just fine, it's just fine. I've ended on projects as simple as a cul-de-sac. Paving's awful, paving's awful, come back with the cost estimates, it's just fine. It's with even, do they like? The other question was, I have a night, it's because there, we had a transition point where the. Urbanize is just like a little village, we've got our stuffs where. And.
Water into ditches.
Do we bring mass all the way forward, you know, and just urbanize it? Or do we just still stay with the transition where we add some. Curb enough, govern, govern urbanized and some without an open ditch. And that transition would be after that first entrance, I think Lost River Road. Every lane, Lost River Road. Yeah, it'd be right in there, we'd transition to a road, road road, we'd have the open ditches. How much money are you really saving at the end of the day if you still have the open ditches to deal with and different variables like that, so. It like, like Sarah mentioned, we wanted to make sure that. We brought this forward of, are you sure? Are you sure? Sure. You know, make sure. This is the product that you want and you're expecting. They have some discussion on it because it's going to be a lot more expensive to go back and redo it later.
Um, keep in mind, we have discussion traffic out there, that's.
It'll be power of it.
It's the fact that we're going to have plenty of heavy haul trucks and stuff out there and. You know, to your right, I'm, I'm terrified of it. I'm terrified that asphalt, I mean, we can build that asphalt thick and we're going to be right at what it's going to cost us for concrete. Versus we spend the money on concrete to do it right, you never have to look back, you know, I, I just. I'm really afraid that road's going to fall apart in a lot shorter period of time than what we're hoping to get out of that road. I mean, these are just my personal thoughts. I haven't talked with anyone else here, so I. But, you know, cost, there is something we settle on costs. Sometimes you get what you pay for and.
And I think this is what we've talked about with this road since the beginning, you know, if we're going to do this thing, we should put down cement and make it done right, so we're not having to go touch it again for years.
So when the original project was conceived, it wasn't going to go beyond. It was, it originally started, it was going to go to the east right away, line out of the bridge, and it kind of got pared back to why do you need to go that far? We've got the third entrance of the Lost River on. And the word, and then it was a cost thing to even pair it back even more into the second entrance, so. I guess I'm curious what your opinions are, how, you know, do you, knowing that Lost River West is coming, is it, do you want to go all the way over to the. Want to take the time for the permitting on that? Thought that to be part of the West Lot, Lost River West addition. You need to know that for obviously.
You.
Plan preparation.
You mean extend this project west of the diversion?
Over the diversion.
Just like literally like a, what is that?
Not very far.
Not even an eighty five.
I'd have to.
You're talking about going all the way to eighty first, then, right?
No, to get to that first entrance so that we're not in the same situation we were before.
Oh, you mean just to the diversion road, eighty first.
Probably we go around the radius.
Just the radius, so that everyone wouldn't say, you put a new development in here, why is this gravel, why is this?
Well, but. Yeah, you just mean to eighty first. You don't mean, you don't mean beyond eighty first to the west. I guess I'd have to see what the cost estimates are between these two potentials and, um. I guess I always thought the initial project was. When we, when we said to the diversion, I guess in my mind that always meant to eighty first.
Okay.
Or you know what I mean? It's, it's, when I say that, that's what I always thought that was meant.
Sure.
Um, but I guess I would reserve my. Thoughts until I've seen what the dollar amounts are for the folks in that assessment district.
And I'll give you in a whole time with that, so we could have, make a decision or things that I just wanted to. Bring it out, it's have some discussion with it because I don't know if we've talked about it, let's just some of. This lot, so this is kind of a.
Yeah. I don't want it to stop.
Long dying on it.
Definitely.
I mean, I see your. I guess. Because I don't, you're right, I don't want them to be like, why are we jogging on gravel or just feeling that hole situation again? Why are we paying for another road? It's already stopped this road.
I have to put dust control if I have to hear it, whether it's you on dust control.
Trust me, I understand.
I'd need, I'd like to see what the assessment district is for this, this project too. Uh, how far north does it go? Or what, what, what does it look like north of Wall?
Well, he's going to that up.
Um. I definitely, uh, I'm a fan of the concrete, and I know it costs more, but. I also don't want the road to start falling apart, and we still have a very long period of time left to pay for. Um, that'd be kind of a slap in the face to whoever's paying for it. The, uh. The curb and gutter talk, um, out there. I don't know if it's absolutely necessary. Uh, obviously, I live in a development that does not have urban gutter. Uh, I know Jim Trubin, I hate me for saying it, but. Um, if it drains, hopefully we wouldn't have an issue with the cattails. Uh, we don't really have a lot of cattails, we send one of the sides, um. It all depends on the drainage, um.
That's real quick because. We had a discussion once.
By order.
Yes, yep, I understand that. That's why I'm saying that, that it would have to.
Say that again, if we did a concrete, had to have curb gutter.
If you do a new growth.
Correct. I understand that, so.
That's kind of where I'm. Hitting this and missing, but I'm also looking at it and I'm going.
Cost wise, does it make sense? Do you really need curb and gutter out there when? You know, they, they have so much room between the houses of Lost River and the actual road or between, um. The Doll Farm and the road, it. A lot of curb and gutter for. For what worth, I guess I'm not sure, so I'm just throwing that out there.
So the district is the Banana River on the south and the east, then halfway off. You know, halfway up to seven six.
Half a mile.
Half mile, mile, it's to the diversion. Basically to the F M.
Is there on an, on annexed land within that northern boundary area though?
There's some.
So what's going to happen with that?
In the, in the northern end, you have Jubilee and. On the west side. Uh, the diversion authority does. Everybody said they even did rest, it's intended. Uh, it request the channel. Yeah, I see the situation here, but they're going to be accusations of this. They ask rules, they have to follow along, following us the way, they'll eventually request them.
Did I agree to that? So they're going to request.
They would like the channel, like to the channel and.
And then.
Anything that.
Products are going to have develop pretty much around them.
So, yeah, and. That, that's eventually going to be benefits, but, uh, on that north end there, so north of Wong, four and a half mile. We have Jubilee and then you have one other property, they probably, it's also sorry in the city, we have to be, but, yeah, the channel. Not the same ones. But eventually they'll request that to come and see if they're working on some of the.
This will be a mess. Right there.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions?
Issue.
All right, Jim, why don't you pull that together first on the next door out? All right, we'll move on to thirteen. Jim, you got this one.
So in some review of our project filing, we've been working on sixty thirty without an agreement to do the work on it, so. Uh, we probably should have made.
What, what, what are we working on on sixty third?
Sixty third, we made from eighty second south, on the east to the west side of the creek. So where we have dead end road to nowhere on sixty third, that would continue down the Wall Avenue.
Oh. Yes.
I know.
Desperately.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's our standard agreement.
I, I thought you were going north, I was like, what?
No, that's what, you went back there, yeah.
Okay, no, that.
Bring us out, right?
Yep. Okay, it's also a percentage based on construction, and there's some reporting into it, pretty much our standard contract. So I'll really not do see based on that, and it is our cap, so.
Okay.
Do we have to, are we just reviewing this tonight? Or I didn't, I didn't get a chance to review this. This just came in the packet a few hours ago. So I haven't had a chance to look at it.
This the standard city agreement or is it something different that we know?
But I don't get to.
Yeah, no, I.
I mean, it's a standard operating procedure to get this thing done.
Sixty six one, this one, change to the project. This is a cost, it's covered by the division. That's that's impossible. Yeah, we already have the improvement district.
Jim, is, uh, section H. Item six, correct? That's an over mid.
Yeah, that's the current standard, that's the one we have to base on the DOT.
Really?
Yeah.
Is that on a percent or other sets?
It's based on, yes. Look the part.
Okay.
And that hasn't changed in the last. Year or so.
Checking.
Yep.
Yes, couple minutes to lose this.
I just wanted to set up, I thought, I know it's a standard, but it's since it got close to the lake, I just want to make sure that my, I feel sure so. I love much bigger than project, the percentage goes down, it'll work for this. Yeah.
Again, it's pretty much just a boilerplate.
Well, there's a buddy who can add it.
You know, when you guys have read through it.
Do you have a snowmobile at this location? I'm just curious because it's on here.
Surveyors, rent that stuff. They dropped the quad in. The ceiling is something. Like, yeah. No, they don't go backwards out of ice. Be the next meter, no.
Forward, Jason.
Yep, they only go forward, they don't go back.
The throttle is their friend. No brakes.
Then this.
Good. It's a little promotion to accept the engineering service agreement that's written. It's motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second. It, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Jimmy, you got the next one. De Jason's hanging out back there, so I know, I know it's coming here.
So the county is planning on reconstructing or constructing, I should say, around the ball at the intersection of sixty fourth avenue and kind of seventeen. Junction with a bridge like. Oxalbert, Giant River and kind of seventeen. This is kind of a tricky area for lighting access. Heating access and for detour routes, so we met with some members of the department, Kyle and Shane last week. They provided us with this map here, so in the middle of it. The plus sign is where the rotten ball will be. They had broken this down into different colored areas or different colored regions. In the green here. Um, yes. A detour lane. Down to seventy six avenue over to forty fifth street and then up. Blue right now area, it would be going east on sixty fourth avenue, you know, there's some area in here that needs to be improved, maybe it shouldn't be improved. Uh, the yellow, the yellow area poses a bit of a problem and the red area here, so Riverdale, Porchupin and Ashwood. Uh, the contract, what we're told is going to be written that. Access is provided to this area via Deer Creek Estates at all times. And it's going to be up to contractor to do that. So that poses a little bit of a problem from the city in that Deer Creek Estates is potentially going to get reconstructed next year. But what we've been told from Kyle and Shane is that this is probably September-ish completion, that sounds about right. Be in September, so I don't think it would be an issue to build a road after that. Roundabout is completed. On Deer Creek, I think, so the city portion of this.
Is it going on at the same time as they were going to fix fifty second?
Yeah, so I'll give a dress that a little bit, but I'm interested in looking for a second half of the portion of it. We didn't know, though, I've. Met everyone, um, since it's been a while since I've been. Ask me, yeah, Jason Benson, my county engineer, and I'm Susie, my deputy county engineer, so, uh. Yeah, thanks, so. Yeah, uh, so it's been, been busy between twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four, we're expecting to spend seventeen million dollars in horse, uh, cash, like tax pay dollars. So that's two years on that four year period, we're basically spending two years of our total road bridge budget for the whole county in horse. So, um, and we're doing that because when you guys hit five thousand, we're turning over a hundred and seventeen and seventy six avenues to the city. Um, as per previous agreements and, and, you know, and I think this is going to make him right.
Can I ask a quick question? I know you're worried. So you said you're using cast county tax pay dollars. But does that mean when we take over the road that we have to pay more or?
No, so, um.
I just wanted to be clear on.
So any project that we do, uh, we use our total of cast coming funding between our, the cast on the property tax. Uh, for a bridge and road fund and then our, our distribution funds, so, um. So we don't assess, so we're not going to come in and build this project and then assess horse tax hitters. They, they have allocation, right? Then by the state or, I believe state, yeah. Then by the state or, uh, I believe state, uh, yeah, that. It probably needs to get, uh, maybe get a bunch of the work, but we may, we may get two. Two funding resources, the highway distribution funds, about eight million dollars. We get about ten million dollars out of our property tax money. So. That's, those are our two big ones that, so we expand about twelve to fourteen million dollars. A year on highway and bridge projects across the counties. So that's on all this process here. So six hundred and twenty seven mile roads up that guy and all the platformer, they have bridge structures that we control. So, um, you know, we've got. Three quarters of a billion dollars in, in assets that we're trying to maintain with that. Fourteen million dollars a year. So that's what we're, again, that's where we're spending about seventeen million bucks. Between last year, three point four. And, and that's part of that is that fifty second avenue to a new port next. That'll happen in next year with West Farm. Antargo, um, and then the fifty second avenue bridge on the shine river. Mario, Espario, as well as continuing. Or lane. On fifty second avenue over Deer Creek. So that whole component, fifty second avenue will be. Four lane all the way. Then. At the same time, we're going to be reconstructing the bridge on kind of the seventeen south of fifty second avenue. And that'll be, we're going to install a box culvert similar to seventy sixth avenue and sixty fourth avenue, except we're making the culverts a lot longer. Um, so that way, just a couple of different things. We're going to. For the road itself, so it's not as high as it currently is. We're talking over the bridge that you're coming out of. Uh, the area in red, maybe you didn't go over the bridge, it's some traffic coming. But then we're also going to make those box culverts long so that in the future. It's wide enough to, to put a four lane section in with bike paths on the other side, so you won't have to come back in. And add on sections of box culverts under that. They'll already be done one time. And, you know, the road is going to get three lane sections, so it'll be. The north south, lots of the center. Turn lane. So, and then we're building the roundabout at sixty. And then in twenty, that's, that's what we're doing next year. Twenty twenty four, anything like kind of group seventeen, fifty second avenue. And after the version inlet that hasn't been paved in the last. Basically, this next year, it'll get paved in one. Asphalt lane. And. Underdown will also. So at that point, everything will be prepped. We'll have done every road that has thirty homes in. City limits. Whereas we've had new asphalt. Or a bridge, you know, and with it, even look at. Still on seventy sixth avenue, kind of six, that's up. So it's going to be pretty, pretty new. Because we've had discussions in the past and we're making sure this is right. So then we turn it over. Guys would then take over any maintenance and operations. So, yeah. Twenty twenty seven, you all agree that it should be four lane curbing gutter. You're going to spend ten million dollars a mile on it. Then it's, that's on you. We'll have done. Our due diligence, I think, providing adequate, uh. Creation of the structure.
When you say turn it over, like, is that me? Are we paying any of these for that?
No, we never fully agree with it. I think basically you guys will just take over the agents. So yes, but you have a memorandum, memorandum under understanding. Uh, that was approved about two years ago, uh, which identifies that. After, I believe, two, within two years after. Turn population over five thousand, so probably next year. Uh, the, the county would have to basically. Get the roads up to our hundred seventeen or the fourteen after part. Before they transition over to us. So that way we're not really having to go and take on expenses immediately to fix up the roads. So that's part of the agreement. That's really kind of the setting I know, like you can put some renewable. Other guys. Like I can pause through there, put that like down. Same thing with county, county does come through and salt sand also on pile, right on seventeen. Also, so it's like a team effort on there. But then also like the summer time, no paint, seventy, it's new stripe. Lines and all of that long road and those are expenses that we think on. After these projects, we'll all have, and Jason's talking about. The twenty twenty five.
So you, you mentioned that you're going to be fixing or repairing both bridges at the same time. The areas marked in red right there. That are going to be caught in between, um, both bridges. And the roundabout, um. How are they going to get out of there? I'm just curious. The, the ones that are on the north side of the bridge, but on the south side of the roundabout. What are those?
There, uh, they're between sixty fourth avenue and the bridge. That's where they'll. So. Our contract will have some sort of temporary access.
Okay.
At some point, most of it, they should be able to get out of this at twenty seventeen and then go to Deer Creek. Access in Deer Creek. There may be some, there may be a. Something a half or so where the contractors get to build the temporary road, kind of in the ditch.
Okay.
Find access to those folks. But for the most part, I mean, so. It is going to be challenging, but it, you know, especially. But, yeah, in the garbage truck. It's bigger, you know, yes. Structures on the most, but the average car getting in and out, I mean, it's, it's going to be a gravel access road. Um, when for a temporary access, but. That should be probably a month, month and a half. That would have a temporary access like that. And it wouldn't be heavily traveled because it would just be the local residents going in. Thousands of people trying to take that.
And there was, I don't know, talk about the actual box culvert structures. Are they scheduled to be delivered on time?
Right now, we, we ordered them. So there's a shortage of. Capacity for building box culverts regionally right now. So. Uh, we were told that they'd be delivered by the end of next July.
Okay.
So right now we're anticipating that we should have it open by end of September next year. Um. But. That was the best we could do is we're, as soon as we started, we were seeing a lot of, uh. Shortages in supply this year, so we don't, that's what we're going out.
And, and I think that was the fear that some of us shared is that you might fall into next winter if you start getting delayed. And at that point, that's. That's really going to hurt.
That's where we think we've already got.
Yeah.
It, you know, could have shipped to. September, but by September. Hope you know that it's not going to happen, but it's definitely not going to go.
It said about two. One, three cats vaults.
And then the, the bridge on fifty second avenue, that has, that's going to be a. Longer construction because that has additional. Flexities. Below that bridge is a dam. But people don't realize that there's on the side, there's a big concrete structure and that's the water intake or the water treatment facility. That pulls water off the shine ends. That dam. Blows that's a little water. That's be sustained there to pull water out. Of course, you know, the people. So, so, um, so. That, that project would just bid out on Friday and, uh. I could see it, we'll see it. It's the city of Argos project, or West Fargo and Fargo have a great part in Castonia agreements. With the city and we're getting our god share on that. And, and similar to how we're turning over our county road. Uh, in the next couple of years, I want you guys to. That's what we're doing on fifty second avenue. That's the last stretch of fifty second avenue. It's technically our twenty oh six. We used to own that all the way to the Red River, including the bridge. Last one year, we've slowly turned over. Areas east of I twenty nine and then. Last. A couple of years ago, we did this section between Deer Creek and. Street, which is over three twenty seven. We paid for a portion of that and then turned it over to the city department, so.
Um, this roundabout, do you know, like, what size roundabout we're looking at? Like. When you think of like fifty second avenue.
That's very similar to fifty second avenue.
Nothing like, uh, veterans or?
No, no. So. That was in the line traffic.
Okay.
And, and. Fifty second avenue is going to have additional things added onto that. So if you're. Getting north into it, if you're. Have a right lane that'll just go east, go on the fifty second avenue, cross the shine and. There you go. Or if you're in the left lane, you'll go. Giant street. Down the fifty second. Yes, it's similar to the, to the one at seventy six, but it'll. It'll have that on three to three.
Oh.
The only link that will have that is the. Soundbound on shine entry because. There's not that much traffic paying. But the, the roundabout at six and fourth avenue will redesigns that in the future if. Traffic demand adding an extra lane. Like seventy sixth avenue.
And I assume we'll do, um, a good job of communicating with the residents in those affected areas so they're.
Right.
Aware of the, the timing of the project and the, and their detour routes.
Right, yeah. So we'll definitely, you know, still have one of our engineers. We've got, uh. Henry and Tom, we've got our, our other insurance supervisor and six and very staff. And so we'll have a box manager there. He's already, he's, he's designing it now. It's his project that he's designing and he'll be up for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, so seeing you get to talking about the, I shared discussion on the detour. So what were you looking at for that?
So just, we'll, we'll, yeah, so he met with our sheben this morning. Island shape, we'll have a parking Dallas and I was there. I'm a portion Ben and, um, this was a bit of a concern was how, yep. If this yellow line here was going to be used for the road, it's going to be approved, dusted, bow ground, like they have lots of private roads. Basically, it says private road, uh, worship gentleman's mind with closing that off completely. So. I think we left the meeting with placing type three barricades all across sixty fourth avenue. Basically. You're in here, you're going to take Deer Creek, if you're up here, you're going to take Deer Creek. If you're a river dealer, you'll take Deer Creek. So. Um, one thing that I did want to emphasize was the need for multiple barricade theory because we did the one up there to the traffic. Had the trouble on sunny side when we did the first roundabout, so. Think that was.
To keep the traffic out of their neighborhood.
It's a, they've got, um, it's a private little.
Yeah.
Trailers that are going to be both the trucks that we're concerned about.
Yeah.
Car speeding in there, you know, just. I see they.
Agree.
Safety and the residents. I mean, it is their hopes.
Yeah, I agree.
Shooting by a bugler house. So. Um, the area that has been discussed because. All this way is. What's, what's to do when you have this, this so additional area, which I guess down here, this is funny, but. Yes, whatever else. So, uh, forty fifth street, this was recently completed by the highway department. This is a paved section. All the way back out to seventy sixth avenue around. So there is a gap in here. Fargo has, I think, crush concrete, there's some salvage crush concrete back to the southwest metro borrow site. And there's a gap in here where the road is unimproved. It is signed for minimum maintenance on both sides. Fargo was going to sign this one. Yeah, I got it up yet.
There's some people fine up.
Yeah, I mean, they, yeah, I know, I just didn't know they had it done yet. So, uh, the question was for, for these residents here. Uh, there wasn't a lot of appetite for the graveling this just because it's going to increase the amount of traffic that we really don't want people driving on. So the others talked about pitch the graveling veterans is, uh, seventh avenue here. Horse doesn't have a lot of, or more so gravel roads. And now there's a good one on forty fifth street, but this, uh, forty fifth was fifty seven, they're back with some product. As potential for traveling. Um, sorry, you will all this, but I don't know if the rest of the council, so there's five and right away. Between Deer Creek and. And so sixty fourth avenue and in the same proximity, it's kind of in the same proximity as. As sixty sixth street that come to one here. Uh, problem that one is obviously it's grass. It's. Belt to belt right now. Yeah, so. Um, and then the other option is, the other issue we've got is this. On this side of the world. There's really nothing until you get. Here. So this is a. Not quite sure who maintains this right now. I think it's city Boris, West Fargo. Boris has the. Their limits are here and the city limits are roughly in this part of the world. But we think West Fargo. Maintains this whole thing. So, um, we really kind of got a hand slap. At our last roundabout project for you, this is the detour route. So, so we didn't think. Well, either way, I think Kyle changed pretty. They didn't want to even delude to use this road just because of, um, the potential for that to be a. Certain by, I mean, it's not certain by, but if you maintain to celebrate, that's correct. It'll be a, into an elevation. So. These gas water resource district that controls, uh, shine, the virgin, or is the virgin project. They have to maintain that at a certain elevation. Just, uh, the east embankment has to stay higher than the western bankways. And if you. Put traffic on it, then, oh, it means more gravel. So you have to gravel on it. Now you're raising the road, you're raising the embankment. So, and they have an issue with that. Um, because it's certified as the. So that's something that we're not. So obviously, it's, it is a road maintained by. To more encouragement, West Fargo and the forest. And so there. Probably some people are thinking, some people think it now. But that's not, we want to have that at the mark and sign. So Greyhawk has a connection, a connection to. Uh, the wilds and West farming. It's much, much closer and probably better road than this. The, the eighty first street. But probably they're being on that right now.
Yeah, I was going to say what?
Walking it. So something will have to happen that gave was put in that direction. The city council before us, they had it installed in further direction as well. So if anything happens to that, I'm going to have some view.
Yeah.
So, um, that was one thing that we had, we had discussed last week was opening that, moving the gate. Hopefully it's going to have your decision, but it doesn't go off the greyhawk. The horse you win and these, there's a new rather substantial house now here. Kind of, uh, even though, yeah, there's a rivers, river, river. Oh, that's right. It's right in the area actually, you have a box. So, um, allowing them to get in to Deer Creek and access, not Deer Creek, that's right, the wild and access up to fifty second. Avenue here.
You mean temporarily removing the gate for, for this, this time purpose?
That, that would be a discussion with the council. However, in order for Greyhawk and the folks yourself to sixty four year to be able to get out. The best grounds for them would be through the page to go through the wilds.
Because the gate was put there because Greyhawk didn't want the. The through traffic.
Because of all the through traffic from contractors.
All the contractors.
And all of this and all of the, yeah, I don't. I mean, I know some people that live there. I think they probably would be maybe. Obviously want maybe it open on temporary basis. I don't know if they'd be interested in having it just be gone.
Let me call comment out there. So it's okay for them to go up into the wilds and use their road, but it's not okay for the wilds.
Well, then we might as do something else because they were there and then the wilds came and it's just constant traffic through their neighborhood. So.
So that is.
Maybe on a temporary basis.
That's a city street.
It is a city street.
I think that's a public street.
It's got no business being gated. So.
Okay.
So that is some, so. Uh, another option along here is, uh, I think it's a little bit outdated, but there's night avenue. Basically to the city limits of West Fargo and Horace. There is a gap in that that's pasture right now. Got a lot of awareness, the old thirty acres additional to this part of the world. That was kind of going to be the trigger for this night, have a new extension. So. I assume that will be coming, but maybe not as quickly as the roundabout that. I think what is Kyle's here funding a bit in that year, December, in December, in December. So. So they would have a contractor open in place by first of January and latest. For worship project. I think. Worship project. I think I could sure but getting nights would be to have that. If that extension could get built, have that built by the end of June. Fine, because in we're gonna start off by doing the roundabout project and not leave the bridge. But um we're not gonna, because we know we're not gonna get the box cover sections until late July. We're not gonna tear out the bridge and make them have it sit there also in the line. So but so it'll just impact the people in yellow and in the greyhawk area. They can't get on on sixty fourth. But then, which isn't a big deal because the people in wilds are gonna be driving down there. Because once they get there, where are they gonna go? They can't go east to sixty fourth to the roundabout because that's under construction. So they'll have to go back west and take gravel. But when the roundabout's open and the bridge is being worked on and special month school starts, got thirty second avenue or or this uh of my Monday park, that's the boundary for this, the middle school, high school. All those people. So if they they're gonna need to be able to get down. So it's either going over to forty fifth street and down from Deer Creek, going through Greyhawk. If that gate's open or going just down that last quarter mile through the purple on ninth street. If sixty four down and the roundabout then in seven comes seventeen uh seventy six avenue. So that's the big picture. I think that probably is more important because if you live by a rural elementary school by Monday park, you're gonna drive to this forty of them, you're gonna drive past giant high school for the forty fifth street and then drive south on forty fifth street to seventy six avenue and then come back. Um, versus if I could just jump on main street and just keep going south, south, south in sixty fourth. Get over to twenty seventeen at the new roundabout, that'll be that roundabout should be done. The rail and wind school is starting. That's our goal is to have that. For instance, there's no way we can have the bridge open before it's open. But we're gonna have the base question to get done on the board. By school starts. So that's where we would definitely encourage the city to to make that at least second, I don't know, connection on that main street through that purple area, that's a purple mile.
Isn't there a yard there though?
There's. He's not already right. There's right. Your graduation.
Okay.
Going down from continuation continuation of ninety down to sixty four is there's a right way there.
Okay.
And can you just?
I was able to have.
Can you just define, I mean, where is the Horace West Fargo city limits in that area?
That thirty one purple one.
Is it the purple? It is the purple. Okay. And where's the gravel road? Right?
Oh, right there. That's where the concrete.
And that's where you'd want to go down.
So yeah, thanks. West Fargo, the concrete ends right there at the.
Okay.
Purple line and then through the purple, there's it's just still right now. But again, there's a hundred foot right away for the road. So you could build gravel road. That would at least provide it.
But is it is it West Fargo? Is it West Fargo? And you just said the purple was West Fargo.
No, it's for hours.
Oh, I thought you said the purple was West Fargo. Okay.
And I, you know, I don't know why, you know, the city limits, they go to the section line.
Okay, I thought it looked weird.
They go a quarter mile north of the section line. So West Fargo and the wilds is all this area.
Okay.
This is, this is still Horace. This is but this is where the connection with Greyhawk is.
Yep, okay. That makes more sense.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Have you guys had to consider any extra traffic control then through Deer Creek? Or any kind of like living parking on the street or anything?
When you look at the population, there's plenty of homes here. Big homes here and then so it's just, it's not that much traffic that's to go through Deer Creek.
And just one enough commercial like contractors, something like that are gonna start using Deer Creek to get
No.
that area.
Because they, our contractor is not gonna use Deer Creek to bring in the box covered sections or whatever. But there's no new houses going in in Riverdale. There's nothing new constructed here. There's nothing new constructed here. So and there's gonna be the UPS guy, there's gonna be the mailman, there's gonna be the garbage truck, your biggest your biggest weighted vehicle is gonna be the garbage truck. Um, but your day daily traffic, if you figure, you know, three vehicles per house, that's sixty uh or you know somewhere around sixty vehicles. They're each doing four trips a day, they're pushing two two hundred fifty trips a day, the extra that are going to be there. But right now you probably have some people pull up, you know, that um so you know, you have you have people that are in here that are already coming in.
Right.
Taking different rounds. So um two hundred fifty vehicles isn't, and we we've talked with with Fargo, they don't anticipate that it's gonna be you know, it's different when it's thousands of vehicles because we're just taking if we're taking the seven thousand or six and seven thousand vehicles that are on China, pushing them through there, then that would be.
Yes.
But uh we're already seeing, you know, some pretty good relief on county word seventeen just by having seventy six avenue over to forty fifth street open. So we haven't done traffic codes since we opened that up, but just anecdotally, you know, driving, driving and seeing the number I headlights on forty fifth street.
So Mayor Dardis and myself, we've talked about that, the ninth street, what we can do there. So we're gonna keep talking about that a little bit, just to kind of get an idea of what what's possible.
That's right. You know, I think even gravel service with some uh belson chloride to keep the dust down and you know, because that's gonna get by for you know, a couple of months and then that's a permanent connection that people in this area will be able to use until it gets paved and you know, ultimately that work really wouldn't. I I don't think it'd be a total loss. You're gonna build salvage.
Right. It'll be the base for something to come.
Yeah, but also because people gravel down there, you get a lot of traffic that's gonna be, you can keep an eye on. But it is something that we're talking. Yeah. Actually. Honestly, it's been a weird discussion. I'm not for. Right now it's here. So that's
And that's it now.
Over the last, you know, three years, we left the fleet service. Yeah, we've, you know, we've been in the in the long game to get all the planning and funding to build, you know, so seventy six avenue and forty fifth street to make that connections because without that, this next summer, we're gonna be able to do it because you can't push, you know, six thousand vehicles out on that work. Really, so we knew we had to build build the that main detour set is the primary detour for for most residents south of sixty four. Not two thousand eight, we built that roundabout compared in building temporary road for graphics and fresh concrete and push some four I doctor that took a lot of cars. Right, yeah, that's just that's that's.
Well, the same issue on the east side, then trying to figure out what would be the better avenue to move that traffic. He said sixty fourth there. Right. So whether we take this sixty four, improve that little section on sixty fourth there and like his own, probably there'll be traffic, but.
I know, and you know, we've had these discussions, same thing with the city of Fargo. I think the challenge, no matter what, when you get to sixty fourth avenue and sitting in county seventeen, if you're new to the area and or even if you're not and you look and you see two miles east, this big shiny overpass over I twenty nine, you're gonna say, I'm going that way because I don't see anyone driving down that road. You know, that's where it's uh just had an inch and a half rain, you're gonna be up your axles. And I know that because uh my oldest son was at a friend's graduation party in like three or four years ago in Horace and he was driving up to my sister's place in North Fargo and he called me. He's like, I'm at these barricades by fifty second avenue and I'm stuck.
Yeah, you see.
That was forty fifth street, you know, so I'm like, why did you go there? Well, Google Maps told me to go there.
Right.
So, yeah. And that was the staff's biggest concern is that we prevent and being served. Grandly creating a wall avenue, trying to be creating highway. People see the whole passage, just that in the forty. It's not, there's nothing to stop them. So right now having that middle maintenance, true middle maintenance, it does let vehicles uh that sort of staff. We talked a lot about this at the point, you go down veterans to seventy six, it connects those residents to and paint park and horse still. Uh, if the detour asks to be in place early along third school year or anything, they're able to get to the main park city, the schools, all that without having to go six hundred miles. It's very drafty. This is on support, emergency vehicles. That's only seven hundred. That's the one piece there too, is it's pretty short connection.
Health gravel road. So let me be looking at improving veterans from sixty fourth to gravel, what's that mean? Going up from the minimum maintenance road.
It's gonna be a good opportunity for us to have that, right? A connectivity for the future. You have a good reason for doing that gravel. Let's do it. This is the cop share with the council here to travel though. You have a little base.
That's I mean, we're on minimum maintenance road. Basically, it's been pulled up a little bit. So there'll be some work to do on it.
Personally, I suggested why don't we do both? Because one eliminates the need to go several miles out of the way. The other one provides a good base for something that's gonna be needed in the future. It made sense to me.
I mean, it'll come down to some costing we're gonna have to look at.
Oh, I never see the but I'm
Funding sources.
And I'm seeing a a bright shiny new roundabout. Who's not gonna go over that bridge?
Yeah, it'll it's coming.
There's no amount of money that's gonna stop someone.
We see it right now. We, you know, I mean, I because of lizard and the interstate shut down and it was like, why is there a semi full of hogs on our county road? Well, for some reason, the guy thought that, you know, because the interstate shut down our county road. Google Maps didn't have our county road shut down, so it must be clean like.
And isn't it true that next year? Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, with my metro project experience, aren't they going to be adding the on and off rents there?
Next year is the year after.
Next year.
Right, twenty, right, twenty nine.
I think it's a couple of years still.
That was a year after.
Is it?
So there's gonna be nothing there for people to get on and off the interstate yet. But like he said, though, everybody's gonna see that shiny new bridge in the distance and go, I can make that. I got a you go. I can do it.
So what we, that was just time you're doing your manual, what we could do is we want to make sure you're aware of these detours and the conversations going on. Uh, we had some ballpark numbers on like the veterans zero list. I think that they could go and refine that evaluate more. Okay, okay, do we need to, what type of base or what do we need to do for that? So you could review that and we'll come back at the next announcement with refine costs and whatever it entails.
Well, I think that
We want to make sure you know what the costs are.
Yeah, I agree that I I went to number one. For the sake of preserving what's needed for the city of West Fargo and the make sure that we are opening, I have someone to hold, regarding the greyhawk gates during this detour time. I think it's absolutely imperative to provide people access and you may have come in. You're absolutely right. And so I would make that proposal. How do I do this?
Right now, let's just discuss it.
And then I'd like to pause on all of the time. Up and down and sixty four.
And then veterans and then our veterans from seventy six.
Yeah.
Just sixty four.
So that we can make an informed decision about cost and about what of those makes the most sense. I think everybody here should really think about sixty fourth and what that looks like next year and what that looks like two years from now.
Convention last last year in coordination with the diversion um from reconstraining forty fifth street via gravel forty fifth street from seventy six avenue all the way down to thirteen on sixteen. Uh, which on their point of fourth avenue. And that was similar where a lot of it was pretty much minimal maintenance road. And we've got those costs of what that what that was. Basically reshaped for contractor gave it a reshaped. They just complained that putting the gravel back.
Yeah, because they were up the clay. I saw, you know, they tore it all up and then flattened it back down and brought in the gravel.
Yeah, so we got some numbers. And that was four.
Yeah, that'd be good to have because that'll give us an idea of what we're dealing with.
That's that's only, that's a model, right?
Yeah.
I brought that, that's a model. So, okay, good.
Yeah.
We'll come back with that. Everyone was in agreement.
Yeah, let's do that, Jim, and just give us an idea of what we're dealing with cost wise there. Um, same thing with that with night. I'm curious as to what that stretch would cost to get that up to what I'll call good road.
And we have costs that's important. It's just that we probably need us to try this for
Right, yeah.
recent numbers.
Yep.
So those numbers you you've done for. Yeah, when we left the meeting this morning, we talked to Kyle, we have a feeling that when something on the first meeting in seven, seven, seven. Okay, we do that as you do early making decision at night and the next meeting in seven. So we figured that you probably tighten up your, but at least it'd be, I would totally give those guys and in the original set. And like, that will be the topics.
Thank you, person.
Yeah, Jason, thanks for explaining that.
Help us understand the magnitude.
Sure, yeah, thanks. And I know next year is gonna be an absolute pain for everybody in Horace. But we could have done this over, get it done on the roundabout, then the next year, done the bridge, and then the next year, did it fifty second avenue. Then it would have been three summers back to back where everybody could just really do that. So yeah, we neither have all the pain in one year, we could spread it out. And it's like sort of an other band, isn't it?
One painful summer again.
Just remember, try to keep that project done before winter because once they shut down I twenty nine, there's only one or two roads to get back here from town.
No, I I feel. You might get up to fifty second avenue, not be able to turn east. A while.
Okay, forty fifth. I've taken that road. Only one. The only complaint I have is that there's no lights. That uh east end of seventy six and on the very south end of
We all ready to get a destination like there.
Sure.
Yeah.
That would be perfect because I've seen fly right past that.
Even though it's blinking. That right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
All right, anybody else got any other questions?
Thank you.
No, we're gonna wait till for Jim to come back with some better numbers. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Brendan, you got the water shut off for us?
Lucas could do it. There's really no changes.
There are changes.
Or yeah, there are.
There's really no changes there. Okay.
You wanted sixty days as a timeframe and then written owners provided ten days prior to shutting up the water stop. But if you guys provide mine and that's what we want changed.
Good.
Yep, so let me make a motion.
I have to make a motion.
I'll second.
Hey, let me make some motion. Jeff does a second to approve the water shut off ordinance with the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Let's go sixteen. Jim.
Right, the page order number one, which is the small novel that Russ noticed, and we're gonna go through this page by page because we're on the list of it.
He did, did he? Oh, I'm gonna read and be sent some of that.
Twenty page.
We have a
Yes, it is.
document here for change. There's a show that there's been a lot going back. Document here for change orders to show that there have been a lot going back and forth and a lot of. Whatever else, a lot of inner workings in amongst the South Dale Park's fourth edition. A lot, there's a little bit of a change order, but ultimately it's a net decrease of a hundred and sixty-two thousand. One hundred and twelve dollars, sixteen cents, but it does have an extension component to this, so. There's a lot of, there's some work here on the sanitary sewer modifications for South Dale Park. We already discussed that. We already talked about that. This is the formal change order that led up to that. We have, um.
They still can't do that, huh?
It's all right, that's done. All of my, my knee throws.
All right.
Far as deep. So I was told that they went down to the elevation where we hopefully could go where it break up to this, like, throw the ground water shot off. I didn't witness it, but that's what I was holding, it's a large guy saw it where they.
Really?
So. There's water there. I just, there's water there. Uh, so there's cost breakdown attached to this, of correspondence for those modifications. There's some revised plan sheets due to those sanitary modifications. Um, we have cost proposals from the contractor. Some other information from them, and then the other big item with drain twenty-seven outlet. We've been working through the drain twenty-seven outlet for quite a bit of time and trying to satisfy. On a resource board and the city of Fargo. And still maintaining Horace's independence of this whole thing, got to be a little bit cumbersome. And making sure that everybody got what they wanted out of it, cause it technically is in Fargo, but it's serviced in the forest. And it's on a drain that's controlled by Cass Water or Viral Water District, so. Um, there's some correspondence in here as far as some items that obviously that, that Fargo wanted to cast, well, Cass County wanted, and they just wasn't any real way. Any real way around that. And they would change from iteration to iteration. That was the frustrating part from our, from our staff is that. You submit plans, these were, these were submitted a long time ago. This is a lot of work in process. Um, and it was, no, we need this now. Well, you didn't catch it on the last revision. Well, caught it on this one, kind of a thing, so. Ultimately, it is a net increase and, but it does have that extension, uh, request in there. There was some issue getting some blocking lids, getting some smooth skates, getting some control structures done, but. Doesn't surprise me just due to the nature of the world right now. Stainless steel is, uh, built. It's kind of a build, uh. Built to order, I guess is what I want. It's a built-to-order item, so, uh, there's some of that in here and then. People just don't have stuff on hand like they used to. Um, any questions on this? I'll try to do my best to answer them. If I take a minute to find the answer, just cause there's.
Yeah, thanks.
There's a bunch in here.
I, I'm trying to find the distribution, the wheels addition to traffic control. What was that for?
It was for, I don't even think. Cause I did comment on this. It was for, I believe it was for the intersection of. Seventieth and. Sixty-eight. For where they had to go down to the mantle to pull those sanitary sewer off. To start there, so, you know, I think it's. There's a reason it was on here as a line, because Eric thought it was kind of silly, so he wanted to put it on there just to. Poop-balling kind of a thing, but. Um.
Tell him he doesn't think.
It's a two-road, low-size, three-road, two-roads, the free traffic of nine, like a free barricades, so. I'm a little bit irritated with the way that is, so I think we're gonna bid the, um. Craft control a little differently next time, where it will be a lump sum.
Lump sum.
It is a lump sum, that's the problem.
But this, that's absolutely ridiculous. Tell him that.
I will. So.
I got two barricades next to my yard, next to my house right now. They do irritate, seriously, to get a fifty feet to come around you.
All right, any other questions on this?
I'm happy to see you, but I'm not thrilled with all the changes that have been made with the death.
Yeah.
I understand that, I understand that it was council negotiations between the province of thousands.
All right, somebody wanna make a motion to accept the change order?
Our motion.
Okay. Definitely make some motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff with a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Who's got the next one? Dan.
You have Dan.
There he is.
All right, thank you all. Park, park myself right here.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, thank you all for having, uh, me here. I'll track you through this presentation relatively, you know, brief, uh, the interested time here. And, um, so anyway, um. I'm Dan Farnes, the Fargo-Morhan Metro Council Government, MetroCOC for short. Um, let me go to the next slide. So, um, anyway, we've been working on the, uh, Fargo-Morhan Metro Bicycle pedestrian plan, and that includes, uh, City of Horace. In our planning area, our planning area goes, um. Uh, includes the core city of Spargo-Morhan and West Fargo. Uh, Dilworth and Horace is now becoming, you know, part of, part of the urbanized area. Also includes, uh, parts of Cassing Lake County, County as well, for those who aren't. But, uh, our planning area, and, uh, we, we do transportation planning for the Fargo-Morhan Metro area. Just a little background there, and, um, let's see here, you will see in your agenda item, I believe you have the, um. A little memo that I put together there with a hyperlink on it, perhaps. All right, very good. And so that's where you can find the, the full plan plus the appendices, so feel free to take a look at that. Um, you can see the plan in its detail. So here's the plan that we are just, uh, completing here and. We're presenting to our jurisdictions in the area and, um, so that's what we're presenting here tonight, and then. I guess we go back one, sorry. And then this is the previous plan. So every five years, we update our plan, uh, for bicycle pedestrian, um, plan and, um. It includes, uh, we look at the existing conditions of what's out there today, what, what the bicycle pedestrian network looks like. Um, and provide recommendate improvements and expansion, uh, of what's out there, um, bikeways, sidewalks, things like that. And, uh, program improvement. Like, um, so why do we do, um, these plans? Um, well, provides a framework for jurisdictions such as you, uh, for planning, and so you can take a look at, look at this plan, which is really aligned with a lot of your other plans. That you've completed as well over the recent years. And, um, and then also identifies, um, we, we had a lot of public involvement with this plan, so. We heard a lot of things from the public, where do you want new, um, you know, bikeways, pedestrian ways, um, and. Uh, what, what are some issues that you see? And, uh, it helps also jurisdictions receive funding for grants. That's an important thing also. So, right here, I took a, um, screenshot from. Google Street View. This is a recent project that the City of Horace did, uh, along County Road seventeen in conjunction of Cass County. And, um, you know, had this project not been in a previous plan, it may not have gotten more of a grant fund. So it's important that, um, that projects are in. Plans, and then when you apply for grant funding in the future, they'll be there. So we also have to look at safety needs, uh, we have crash data available to us that we can see. Where there might be use of crashes that have happened. Um, we could, well, just quickly, just mentioning like why, um, why I care about bicycle pedestrian travel. There are six point one percent of, um. Uh, occupied housing units that don't have vehicles, so it's more than just, you know, recreation, but there's also, um, transportation need as well. Uh, for those people who don't have vehicles or for those who are too young, obviously, you know, biking to school, walking to school, things like that. So as, as Horace grows. Then there'll be, um, maybe more, there'll be more of a need for, for shared use paths, and they're already there, so. Go to the next slide. Um, as far as the public engagement with this plan, we had, uh, two rounds of public engagement, um, July of twenty-twenty-one through November twenty-twenty-one. That was online engagement. We had a total of three hundred and forty-seven online, uh, surveys who responded. Two hundred and fifty-six, uh, online map interactions, so we're really happy to see that. Phase two of the online engagement was, uh, March of, uh, last, this year. Through April of this year, and not as many online survey responses, but a lot of people did the interactive map, uh, exercise that we had. And so what are some of the things that we've heard from the public as far as themes, just grouping them together, some main. Items that we heard was, um, that the public liked the trails, so shared use paths, like what you have in County Road seventeen, especially ones that are on greenways. Or, um, rails to trails, long rivers. They really like those. They like them to be set back a roadway, they're more comfortable for them. Uh, especially with families and there's young kids, and, uh, they like that. We also, um, heard. Uh, complaints about upkeep in the winter, um, of, of. This, uh, bikeways and walkways like that. You can see, here's an example of Fargo where there's, uh, ponding on a, on a trail and, um. You know, that could have been designed a little higher up, so that doesn't happen, so just, uh, future reference. I don't know if you have any issues there, maybe somewhere, I'm not sure about that.
We do, west side of, uh, seventy-six on the south side of the road. County section of the sidewalk.
Okay, well, that's, uh, some of the complaints we've heard, so, um, it's good to be aware of that one there, thank you. Um, and then there's some things out of our control, such as flooding, winter weather, um, but like lighting is another thing the public wants to see more of, uh, along trails. Improved signage and trail conditions, river crossings, um, now is mainly referring to the river. But I suppose that could also apply to Cheyenne nearby too, and, uh, more education for motorists and pedestrians and bicyclists. And what are the rules of the road, sometimes we don't know when to cross or, or what to do there. Um, and then resource and, and partnerships, let's see, I didn't have here. So this is a bit intimidating. This is our recommendations map, and, um, there are two. Red and the purple are kind of similar there, so keep that in mind, but the red is the recommended future routes or proposed routes. Ones that you can use, maybe like in the future, um, to have a. Better network in your community as your community grows, so, uh, what you see here, a lot of these came out of. Plans that you've done, like your, um, Horace comprehensive plan, uh, and then you can see like this rail. Uh, spur here, I believe that's something that the city is considering, and, uh, this would be along the drain. And, uh, this would be just going north and south down County Road seventeen. What you see in green are completed trails. Paved trails, and so those have been completed. You can see some completed already in Horace, and there might be more, cause map was generated, um. You know, about six months or so ago, um, and then along most of our tier roads, it's, it's common and preferred to have a shared use path. On one side of both sides, um, so, anyway, that's the recommendations map, um. And you can also see along the, there's been talk over the years, not sure if it'll still happen of a Cheyenne diversion trail. But now with the FM diversion, that's been probably a higher priority of having a. Uh, trail along that diversion, uh, wouldn't be something the city would pay for, but it'd think it'd be more regional to the trail. So, anyway, a lot, lot going on in that map, um. Uh, I'd be happy answering questions. I think there's one or two more slides after this, so we can. Go to that. This is a nice guide for, especially for the engineers, um. This is in our appendix G of the report, and so it just shows it's. Much of pages of different design types out there, whether it be sidewalks or how to design a complete streets type of a. Um, street that you see at the top, or if they're, you know, if the city's ever looking for bike lanes in the future, this kind of shows. Uh, best practices of designing bike lanes as well, so, um, very great guide if you, um. If your city wants to take a look at that inside the plan as well.
I like the delineators on the bottom with the bike. I've seen the bike paths, but never the delineators.
Right, yeah, and then people, bicycles feel more comfortable with the delineators on these ones.
Yeah.
Uh, because it separates them from, from vehicles, so, yeah. Then lastly, just kind of wanted to, we have this little, um, note in our plan, I won't read it all, but just kind of. To, to make a, a city. More walkable and bikeable, it's not just about sidewalks, not just about paths, but it's also about land use, so, um, you know, say if you have some. Like a downtown or like a city center that you eventually kind of want to develop in the future, um, it's, um. You know, we can build a lot of sidewalks and paths, but, um, but really if there's more of a mixed use, a little more density. In those certain areas, and if the land use is, is, uh, comfortable for pedestrians and bicyclists, then, then they'll use it more often. So just want to make note of that, and that sets in the plan to get, there's, there's a link between, uh, planning, development and, uh. The, the level of use that, uh, pedestrians and bicycles.
So, so fixed use in the downtown setting is more inviting for pathways and walkways and.
And for people choosing to walk and bike, it's, uh, yeah, there's more destinations nearby, and so, for example, if it was. Say, say thirteenth Avenue in Fargo, for example, where there's parking lots and, you know, strip malls and big box stores, people aren't gonna walk from Target to the mall. Whereas if it was, you know, a setting looking like this or that, then people would walk across the street to go from one shop to the other. Anyway, just kind of wanted to go over the plan real quick, um. There's, there's quite a bit in the plan and there's the appendices as well, um, but anyway, just be happy to answer any questions, then we'll also be seeking, uh. A resolution of support, which we're seeking from all jurisdictions, just saying that we adopt, we support this plan that MetroCOC will adopt. You can just use as a guide, not, you're not tied to anything in this plan, it's just a guide, guiding the document.
That's even more of a less than anything. Fully comprehensive. I love the concept of both the urban use paths and also. The more rural paths such as on diversion, nature, conservancy, walking, that nature, uh, it's. Something our town would be privileged to do.
There's a lot of potential in Horace, uh, you know, a lot hasn't gone out yet and, um, you know, from rails to trails, you'll. That becomes a thing. So just a lot of potential in Horace, I'll just say that, uh, with your drains there, so keep that in mind.
Yep, definitely. Okay, guys have any other questions? Comments?
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Dan, appreciate it.
You bet.
You guys wanna put together a. Support?
Oh.
Resolution?
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, including your package for the signing things.
I saw it, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of support considered for us. I think it's fabulous.
Okay. There, make some motion, can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, Jeff with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Dan, appreciate it. Okay, eighteen, JC got this one. Right.
Are you cold in here?
Are you cold?
Freezing.
My dear.
Not terrible.
You have a jacket.
Sure.
So, if you remember a few months back, we came forward with, uh, some projects potentially to apply for through the transportation alternative grant program. And we had a couple of studies about these, and then we discussed potentially looking at some downtown streets. Well, we started to do through the application process and kind of preliminary exploring of some of these applications. Our downtown street save plan really without any sort of guiding document. It's not gonna score very high, nor could we really write the foundational of that thing, who that project would look like. Uh, so through this TA program, there was a total of seven projects submitted from Horace, West Fargo and Fargo. We ended up submitting for two that were insinuation of the phase for County Road seventeen, the shared use path. Uh, the first one was from sixty-four to sixty-eight street. And when that project came through, it actually turned out to be a low-scoring project in the spring, but then we came up with a second one. Uh, that would end taking from the elementary school where that crosswalk dumps you out into Casey's parking lot. All the way north up to eighty-first, they connected with a shared use system that takes you to the high school, all the new commercial up there. That project came back through the scoring as the second highest ranking project.
And that was on the east side of seventeen, okay.
And also down, so this was the first one. Through this side. And then the second one would bring you from this crosswalk all the way to eighty-first project. So through the Viking Head Committee. Had a preliminary ranking, uh, thirty-five points for the scores. That got brought forward to the Transportation Technical Committee, uh, who motioned to recommend that. This project will be called phased by. Would get full eighty percent federal funding in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And then, so that'd be eighty, twenty in that sense. Like a kickback again, but.
I can, we can.
I can see it there, yeah.
So. Where we're at now, and I believe the policy board and all, you councilor should know that ended up passing or approving the Transportation Technical Committee's recommendation, uh, for the Transportation Alternative Grant that I was talking with Dan Farnes about, uh, timeline now. So we should get the official recommendation or official approval from MetroCog, uh, within the next week or so. Uh, regarding the, what we call phase five realistically from now, which is for the eighty-first, uh, for a brand new shared pass in the federal fiscal year 2024. And with a full eighty percent funding from that project.
This is super exciting. Good job.
Yeah.
Good work. Fabulous.
Really good work.
Fabulous. And, and I love how we're working together on this. I mean, MetroCog's been huge in guiding the growth and, and, you know, helping us preserve some of the wonderful things that are seen. And this is excellent. Absolutely excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, look for when we start to get in the plans of that for them. Ready for the next?
Can't wait to see. Yeah, we'll see what's coming. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, thank you, Jase. All right. So the next one we got here is eleven eighteen. Eighteen B. I'll get it right yet. Special event, senior center December eleventh, Tundra Mania. Who wants to just kind of?
I have this one here, and, uh, I think this is probably a first for Horace that we say, oh my God, tells me.
Best I know.
So, uh, wrestling, you know, going on at the senior center.
Hmm.
Uh, anyways, Tundra Nutrition is going to put their statement on this. Uh, Tundra Mania event on December eleventh at the senior center. Uh, they're working with Wildberries Bar and Grill for alcohol sales tied to that event. Um, but that would be going, or that would be going off from three thirty to seven p.m. And they anticipate about two hundred people be present for that. Yeah. Um, anyways.
They're looking.
We don't really have any issues with this special event, liquor license permit, um, Wildberries Bar and Grill. I think you must probably know about Wildberries Bar and Grill and how they back the bar and have the mic.
I got no problem with this. Let's get it done. Yep. Somebody make a motion. Hey, maybe we make some motion. Can I get a second?
A second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. On the nineteen, Jim.
Right. Well, up until yesterday, they kind of had a bench of standstill with snow and the cold and everything that. Well, then today came around, three days in the middle thirties and things are picking back up again.
About that.
So, um, the projects that are being worked on are early third edition. Can we keep going on that? I'm quite sure how long you're, how long you're going to push it, but they are working on that. We did get a survey request for the water noise project with the connection to pistol edition. So that'll be moving along here. Uh, we're thinking that's going to be moving towards the middle of the week. I talked with the code underground today and they pretty much said they're done for the rest of the year. So, um, we've got right now just two construction projects that are, two or three construction projects that are ongoing. And we're finally, the rest of her, finally now through form near the next month to try to get that for the end of the, of the calendar year. And where we sit for now, we'll ramp up next month with the designer sports, the projects that are coming for next year, all right? Let's go.
Yeah, good. Okay. Any questions for Jim?
Did you have any contractors ask for extensions?
Um, since last meeting.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, Brenton, you got it.
Hey, a couple of updates. I have one. We'll probably be, well, likely be bringing in a lot of inventory mapping for the council here and on your needs in December. Uh, show you the, the cleaned up version. And we talked about this a couple of months ago. Now Jason's gotten it together. Pretty good. Uh, it's pretty, they're acting out to show you our line inventory and where we're sitting. Uh, on a fairly current basis, we'll update it on occasion as we have building events come in, then we can update it. So he's been working on that. Uh, other item, similar regards is, uh, we have an app, a living mobile app that we'll be talking about probably December also. And then that one will be, that at least correctly, yeah, that's one that's mainly to tell you about different events or things going on in the community. Of course, and.
Yeah, then there's, um, uh, you can post jobs on it, um, can stream school events through it. Um, have the emergency patient.
It really means getting professional.
Yeah, it sounds almost like a next door, but there's no way that people can. It's just to.
So likely in December here, run through of that, like also you can see. Uh, and the last thing that is by instruct position, it's accepted. Uh, individual same to that bolts will start school.
All last day?
Bolts, D O, eight, old, uh, I kept on, D O L P C.
B is in Victor?
Yes. Yeah, we came from more of the main industry before. But it's just outside of Horace or up in Fargo, but.
Deer Creek. Yeah, Deer Creek area.
Yeah.
We're excited to be going in that position. Uh, like I said, we're looking to start a date of Monday.
Next Monday.
Yeah.
Twenty eighth?
Yeah, yes. And they're coming soon.
Yep. All right, portfolio reports. So was it about a week and a half ago? Ready Tech had their grant opening, like did the ribbon cutting ceremony with that. That was fun. Sally was there. You took some pictures, I hope.
Soon again.
The ready, the ready tech one. No. No, the ready tech one. I think we did, you were there. Well, anyway, I don't. Yeah, so I had eyewitnesses anyway. So I did that. Um, I got an email last night from Judy Lee, um, the daycare follow-up that she did with me. Um, they have met with some people in Bismarck and that discussion that was had on that Sunday night with the daycares. Uh, some of their concerns are being addressed. So we're hoping that those can get fingerprint laws with the baby. Uh, there's a couple of the ones that are on the list too, that they're talking with people about. So it'd be nice to see if we can get some movement on some of that stuff. Even if we can't get everything, it'd be nice to see if that, there's some movement. So that was good. Yep. And when we had a, I was invited to a Realtors get together where they invited all the elected officials from Cas County pretty much. Along with the Realtors, they kind of went over what their concerns are going to be here coming up for the legislative session. Sounds like they're gonna, we're gonna probably have another meeting with, uh, some of those folks again too. On a couple of their issues, but I'll keep you guys posted on that as it happens. So just talk right now. So Sarah, what do you got?
Well, since I got back to town, I had my time, it was absolutely cold. But sixth, fourth, having a round of our tours, um, meeting with people, having different discussions on that. And I unfortunately even had to miss one today. One, one out of all of them. But I, I did okay. Um, country two, um, thrilled that we have that, uh, like right Friday today. And then of course, the, all of the discussions on wall opening, um, that's been crazy. I think everybody's heard all of that. So that has been top priority. Um, I was thrilled to see the business lights go. I, we thought there was all good Christmas, so the more lights, the better. I think they're absolutely beautiful and I love the good light that we purchased. Um, we have more light bulbs being, but those are gorgeous. I would like to thank the city and the Lions Club for, uh, helping us out with menus.
Okay. Naomi, what you got? Stephanie, what do you got?
Just quick, um, we have our holidays event coming up on the tenth, right, Sally?
Yes.
December tenth. Um, we're having a meeting with Park District, I think tomorrow evening. Um, and we've just been working with a hundred and fiftieth, uh, Horace celebration groups. We've been really trying to kick that into a little higher geared spin, uh, been busy. That's all I have.
Okay, sounds good.
Hi, Brenton, is it's like a staff council meeting or it's like, yeah, right? It's not an official park meeting tomorrow night. And we have a
Maybe I'll go.
Do we have a hundred and fif- we might have a hundred and fiftieth meeting tomorrow night too. Let's check my, I have to check my calendar. Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. See. Anyway, go ahead, Jeff. What do you got?
Um, well, obviously Brenton stole my thunder on the, uh, sorry. the new layer, which is fine. And then, uh, Jase, uh, got the, uh, MetroCog stuff and that's fine. So I have a whole lot. It's guys in the.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be a little bit different.
So that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Good. Favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
You know, I was thinking there's another meeting tomorrow night too. Oh, no, I know what it was. It's the following Tuesday.
So.
There's a, there's a park district meeting and then we're having a, we're having a girl meeting for the Thursday night.
Gun apple.